Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks so much for coming to our city council voting meeting. Today is November fourteenth, 2023. It's 3:00 PM. It's a beautiful day outside, although you can't see it. But I appreciate your attendance, and we've got a pretty interesting agenda for you today. We'll start off with introductions and announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to introduce councilmember-elect Ted Gambogi and Lois Furworth. Stand up, so we can recognize you. You guys will be joining us up here shortly. I also want to acknowledge former councilmember Tom Riley in the back there. I see you, Tom. And if you're dignitary and I missed you, I apologize. I do best I can. I do have some announcements. First, the City of Prescott is conducting a community-wide survey designated to identify clear priorities for use in strategic planning and budget setting. The open survey, in which we seek public participation, started last week and will continue through November twenty-first. This open survey is available on the city's website. Go to the Prescott website, which is prescott-az.gov, and look for the link on the homepage, or you can go directly to participateprescott.com. To learn more and take the survey beginning today, please note that earlier this month, 3,000 citizens were randomly selected to receive a mailed survey. That mailed survey will be open for response through November twenty-first. If you have received a mailed survey, we would ask that you complete that mailed survey and not the open survey, which began last Monday. Everyone who has not received a mailed survey should use the open survey, which is obviously currently open for your participation. We look forward to receiving as much feedback as possible from the Prescott community. The second item is the City Council Subcommittee on Appointments is seeking applications from citizens who are interested in serving on the newly-formed Civic Enhancement Committee and the Workforce Housing Committee. The Civic Enhancement Committee has seven vacancies, as it's newly-formed, and the Workforce Housing Committee has one short-term seat to fill. Applicants do not need to be a Prescott resident for either of these committees. Applications are due to the city by 5:00 PM next Monday, November twentieth. Third, next Tuesday is Thanksgiving. The City of Prescott will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November twenty-third and twenty-fourth, in observance of Thanksgiving holiday. City offices will reopen November twenty-seventh at 8:00 AM. The City of Prescott Solid Waste Division will not be collecting residential or commercial routes on Thursday, November twenty-third. Thursday collection routes will be collected a day early on Wednesday, November twenty-second, for both residential and commercial customers. There will be no change to the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday routes, just Thursday routes will be affected. Friday collection routes will be collected as scheduled on Friday, November twenty-fourth. The City of Prescott Transfer Station will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-third. The transfer station will reopen on Friday, November twenty-fourth, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Please remember to cover and contain all loads when transporting them to the transfer station, located at 2800 Sundog Ranch Road. For further information, contact the City of Prescott Solid Waste Division at 928-777-1116, or visit prescaterecycles.com. The library will be closed on Thursday and Friday, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday, and will reopen on Saturday, November twenty-fifth, at 9:00 AM. Your library without walls offers eBooks online, online resources, streaming video, and much more, and is available 24/7, even on Thanksgiving, at prescatelibrary.info. That's all the announcements I have, Mayor, and I'll just say happy Thanksgiving to everyone early.
Thank you very much. We'll now have an invocation by Father Raj Bredo from the Sacred Heart Church, followed by a Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Tenny.
Let us pray. God, our loving Father, send forth your Spirit of wisdom and understanding to fill the hearts and minds of all our councilmembers and our civic leaders. May their judgments be right, their conscience glow with goodness, and their dedication to justice and mercy be clear. Strengthen them when they feel weak, enlighten them when they feel confused, protect them when they are unjustly opposed, and above all, give them love for the people whom they serve. May your guidance and presence always accommodate them. We ask this in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Do you join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, a nation of honor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, folks. U.S. flag code is very important to me, and the flag needs to be placed in its proper position, so it is now. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelme. No.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
Councilman Tenny.
Also here.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Moore is excused from the meeting.
All right, our next item on the agenda is a presentation to the graduates of the Citizens
Amber and I talked beforehand, and for simplicity, we're going to have all you guys come up here right now, and then when you call your name, we'll kind of recognize you. So if you all, all the Citizens Academy graduates, if you want to come up and kind of form behind. No, go ahead.
Thank you all for being here. I'm Amber Fraser. I'm with the City Manager's Office, and I'm lucky enough to be the facilitator for the Citizens Academy. For those of you who might not know, the City of Prescott hosts a Citizens Academy that serves residents by exposing them to city departments and operations. This program is intended to provide participants with insight to the everyday workings of the city and what affects their daily lives. It is also a way to promote open lines and communication and offer a clear understanding of how the city's services affect their everyday lives. So at this time, we are here to acknowledge all of our graduates who have taken time out of their lives to learn about city services, and I will let Mayor Protem, unless Mayor wants to say something.
Well, I just have a lot of pride in the number of graduates and the number of Citizen Academies that we've conducted over the last number of years. I was talking to a member of the Chino Valley City Council just a few days ago, and I remember almost a decade ago when I heard that Chino Valley had one of these academies, and I said, "Boy, that sounds like a great thing to learn." And we decided to adopt that and create an academy for our residents, and we've been able to generate a lot of interest in our 27 boards, commissions, and committees. When you add up the number of volunteers we have on those, it's literally hundreds. So being able to have some graduates here that are now pretty well-educated on the broad scope of services that we provide in the city certainly helps them understand how the City of Prescott works and be able to even maybe volunteer for additional service to the city. So we're very proud of this group, and it's a pleasure to have them here today to receive their certificates of graduation. I was telling them, we don't have mortarboards, and you can't flip your tassel, but we'll do our best. Thanks.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read the names now, and I will try. I've worked with Amber beforehand, so that I can hopefully pronounce the names correctly. First off is Marla Bastler. Joan Di Pietro. Not here, okay. Christine Dixon, who I think is also not here. Judith Garcia. No, okay. Michael Haley. Michelle Yorting? Yorting? Okay, she's not here. So I guess it's okay that I got her name wrong. Beth Lester. Richard Loefler. No. Okay. Kim Loefler. I'm guessing is also not here. Valerie Macklem. No. Okay. Finally got one. Patty McKinney. Steven Schmidt, who I think is also not here. Okay. Lori Stockman. John Stockman. Karen Varela, who I think is not here. And then Sharon Zipperman. Not here. Okay. And then Steven Zipperman, who I think, I imagine, is also not here. All right. That's everyone. I just want to say.
Sorry, I managed to miss a couple.
Oh, sorry. Luann Reynolds. Sorry about that. Well, thank you all for your participation, and as the mayor said, now you're ready for the next step of civic service, so we look forward to seeing you on boards and commissions.
Starting with your photo. So we'll have everybody scooch in in the middle.
Tell people in the back.
Tell people in the back.
You can't see John, he can't see you.
And you're going to see that's lecturing.
Are we angling?
Yep, we're angling.
All right, make sure you can see me, everybody. All right, ready? Here we go.
I wanted to take a second and thank Amber. She did a great job organizing, so please give her a big round of applause. All right, our next presentation is Guns and Hoses Event Recap and Check Presentation.
Hey. Good afternoon, Mayor Good and Council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to present the funds from the 2023 John Hannah Senior Guns and Hoses Memorial Golf Tournament. This was the eighth annual tournament that took place on Sunday, August 27th, and was another sold-out event. Next slide, please. There you go. That's the banner that we hang outside Antelope Hills, and those are some of my grandchildren there. I want to thank everyone who participated. Lamb Chevrelé, who is our main sponsor, the staff at Antelope Hills Golf Course, who always bend over backwards to make sure our tournament is a success, along with all the local merchants and individuals who donated a raffle prize or sponsored a hole. Everyone has been very generous to our tournament over the years. I want to thank Councilman Sishka, who has also donated a raffle prize and sponsored a hole to support our tournament for over several years. Every year, the proceeds from the raffle prize ticket sales and hole sponsorships are split between the Prescott Police Department Shop With a Cop Program and the Prescott Firefighter Charities. People often ask me about these two charities. This year marked the 26th Annual Shop With a Cop Program. This volunteer program began as a way to promote goodwill between law enforcement agencies and Quad City families experiencing medical and/or financial difficulties and hardships. Next slide, please. Okay, so that's everybody getting ready to head off for the tournament that participated. So as you can see, we had a great crowd. Okay, next slide, please. Okay. Between 60 and 80 children between the ages of seven and 12 years from the Quad City area are chosen each year for this program. There are over 11 different police agencies that participate. Each child teams up with a law enforcement officer in the morning and is escorted to Walmart via police cars, including driving lights and sirens across town, to their destination. Once they arrive, next slide. Santa lands in the parking lot via native air helicopter and greets the children. The rest of their adventure includes breakfast, visiting with Santa, and shopping with an officer for presents for their family. This day is the highlight of all the agencies involved. Getting to meet these children is truly a blessing. The majority of the children don't even think about shopping for themselves when purchasing a gift, and it's sometimes a challenge to pick something out for themselves, as they are all concerned about shopping for and getting gifts for their family members. And I can tell you, I have been to this event several times and just walked around and listened to the kids, talked to the officers, and they are very concerned that their parents and their siblings get what they want, you know, for Christmas. So they're very tuned in. These kids are very tuned in what's going on. And it's very moving. It's very humbling when you hear a kid tell an officer, "I want to get, my dad needs a coat, he doesn't have one. My sister wants Barbie Legos really, really bad." That's what she wants. That's all she wants for Christmas. And if any of you have ever been to the Lego aisle in Walmart, you know how challenging that can be. So each child is sent home with all their presents wrapped, courtesy of the local high school cheerleaders and other law enforcement personnel that show up to help with the event. This is all to make sure that they go back to their families with their presents, so they have something under the tree Christmas morning. This program is solely run by donations, and it would not be able to happen without the love and support from our community. The other part of the funds, next slide, please. The other part of the funds raised from our golf tournament go to the Prescott Firefighter Charities, who support the Arizona Burn Foundation by focusing on support for Camp Courage. This camp provides young burn survivors a week in Prescott in May and June, filled with healing, friendship, and growth through therapeutic activities such as rope courses, arts and crafts, tie-dye, and equine programs, and more. Camp Courage is a safe environment where burn survivors can encourage others who have been through the same similar circumstances and learn that their scars do not determine their worth or define who they are. This normalizes their injury, which can often be severely impacted to the children due to the importance of fitting in with their peers and as these kids grow up. This year, on behalf of the John Hannah Senior Memorial Golf Tournament, I am proud to present a check for $3,200 each to the Prescott Police Chief Amy Bonney in support of the Shop With a Cop Program and to Prescott Fire Chief Holger DeRay to support the Prescott Firefighter Charities Camp Courage. Thank you. So we're going to stand in front? We don't want the podium.
Thank you very much for that, Sheri, and I know you've been conducting the Guns and Hoses Tournament for a number of years now and just continues to get bigger and better. Thank you. We'll now move on to proclamations. The first one will be Frank Shield, a November 20th, 2023.
And before I do this, I just want to say thank you, Mrs. Hannah, for all the things you do in our community. That's just one example of the many things that you do to make this community a better place. We sure appreciate you. All right. It is my honor to present this proclamation regarding Major Frank Shield Jr. Remembrance Day for the 20th of November coming up this year. Whereas Frank Shield Jr. was born November 20th, 1917, in Phoenix to Frank and Verdi Fernandez, and came to Prescott with his family in 1923. And whereas in junior high, he organized the Prescott Junior Aeronautical Club, and in high school was known as the Flying Cowboy, graduating in 1935, declining an appointment to West Point. And whereas after two years at the University of Arizona, he was accepted into the Army Air Corps, his motto was, "He would, quote, 'rather fly than walk,' unquote." And whereas he completed basic training at Randolph Field, Texas, and was awarded his coveted wings as a second lieutenant on November 29th, 1939. And whereas Frank was recruited into the American Volunteer Corp., excuse me, American Volunteer Group, AVG, known as the Original Flying Tigers, in July, 1941. And whereas during his time in the service, Frank served as a reconnaissance specialist, easy for me to say, and flew over 200 legendary medal-winning missions. He received a Silver Star, two distinguished flying crosses, the fifth-grade cloud and banner, the British Distinguished Flying Cross, and the four-star wing medal. And whereas in honor of Major Frank Shield, a rest camp for soldiers named Camp Shield was built in China. And whereas Frank was killed on December 7th, 1942, at the age of 25, in a plane crash in Kunming, and was laid to rest at Mountain View Cemetery here in Prescott on October 20th, 1947. And whereas Major Frank Shield Jr. represents well the patriotism and bravery of his beloved hometown and served his country with great honor. Now, therefore, feel-good Mayor of the City of Prescott does hereby proclaim in honor of Prescott's legendary aviator, November 20th, as Major Frank Shield Jr. Remembrance Mayor Good, City Council, I'd like to thank you all for this proclamation and remembrance of Prescott's very own fighter ace with seven confirmed kills, Major Frank Shield Jr. Thank you very much.
Yeah, right in the middle, right in front of him. Perfect. That's great. Thanks. Thank you.
Wait a minute.
Now, it's my pleasure to present a proclamation celebrating Milton Zasek's 104th birthday. Come on up here, Milton, if you can. Whereas Milton Zasek, Staff Sergeant, United States Army, World War II, celebrated his 104th birthday Whereas Milton Zasek, Staff Sergeant, United States Army, WWII, celebrated his 104th birthday on November 9, 2023. And whereas having been born on November 9, 1919, in Baltimore, Maryland, Milton has been a member of the Prescott community since 1999. And whereas having survived the Spanish Flu as an infant and the COVID virus at age 102, whereas receiving recognition for low crawling under machine gun fire to rescue his wounded sergeant and bringing him to safety, and the Presidential Unit Citation for his unit capturing the largest artillery gun in the Philippines. And whereas he retired after 32 years as a train engineer for Bethlehem Steel. Now, therefore, I feel good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, along with the City Council, do hereby consider it an honor to make this recognition to Milton Zasek on the occasion of his 104th birthday and acknowledge his military service in WWII. Congratulations and best wishes. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause a seal of the City of Prescott to be affixed this 14th day of November, 2023. Congratulations, Milton. As a combat infantryman, along with Milton, I think we both would agree we would also like to be able to fly rather than walk.
All right, thank you very much.
You want to say anything?
I just want to say, look upon all you people here, you look beautiful. You know why? God made you good. Everything he done was good. So be proud of yourself. You're still here. And I just want to say that what the good mayor here has said, I consider myself just a plain old Joe, and I lived a clean life, and I contribute my longevity of life to the Lord. He still keep me here for some reason. So I want to thank all of you here, and I'm just amazed what's happening here. It's the first time I've been here, and I commendate every one, the mayor and the councilmen. Thank you.
Our next proclamation will be for Small Business Saturday, presented by Councilwoman Connie Cantelme.
Oh, boy, just in time. Christmas is right around the corner.
Yes, it is.
Thanks for stepping up, ladies. Whereas the City of Prescott, Arizona celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas Shop Small celebrates small businesses ranging from retail stores to restaurants to fitness studios and salons and everything in between. So remember that one. Illustration, there are nearly 32 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid new jobs created since 1995. The small businesses employ 46. And whereas 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday, and 72% report the day makes them want to shop and dine at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants all year long. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I feel good, Mayor of the City of Prescott of Arizona, do hereby proclaim November 25, 2023, as Small Business Saturday. So get out and spend some money.
That's right.
You're welcome.
All right, good. I think we're gonna take a picture. Here we go. Go that way.
I wish, if I could, please. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Sheri Heine, and Marie Simpson was with me as well. And on behalf of the 1,000-plus business members that we have at the Prescott Chamber of Commerce, we want to thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for recognizing Small Business Saturday, which is a great tradition here on Saturday, November 25, which also kicks off Arizona's Christmas city. You can see the night parade that evening as well. So I want to encourage everybody to always shop locally. And I mean, earlier, you received some checks from charity. That's what shopping locally does. It creates commerce here in our community and helps supports not only the businesses, but also charities in the community as well. And so just please feel free to shop locally. We will have gift or coupon books available starting on Monday at the Chamber office. So come on down, pick that up, and get out there and shop. And yes, I'm going to fill up my bag on Saturday.
So shop small, but buy big.
While the mayor makes his way back up here, we will move on to the open call to the public. City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total with the following stipulations. Citizens will be limited to addressing council on the same topic only four times in total. If a topic has been addressed more than five times by different speakers, the mayor may limit future discussion on the topic. And topics of a primarily national concern may be limited at the discretion of the mayor. I do have one comment card, Mayor, and that is from Ralph Hess.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. First off, I'm Ralph Hess from Prescott, Arizona. And first off, I want to belatedly commend you for adding this call to the public to your agenda. I think it's very important for members of the public to be able to address items that are not on your agenda and bring it to your attention and bring it to the attention of the public at large. So thank you for doing that. Secondly, I urge you to resume or reinstate the practice of the hybrid meetings that you had during the COVID period, where you were able to zoom, citizens and council members who were absent were able to zoom into the meeting and participate in the meeting in that fashion. That will enable homebound citizens and citizens who are out of town or council members who are out of town to more frequently participate in the meetings meaningfully and provide their comments to agenda items that you're considering at any particular meeting. So I'd like you to please consider resuming or reinstating that hybrid meeting. And thirdly, what I'd like to address is the practice of not making or placing comments, public comments that are made through your website on the record of the meetings. As you will see in the agendas that are before you, it invites public comment on the public comment form that is on your city website. I just recently learned that if you use that public comment form instead of being present and using one of the forms at the rear of the chambers here today, that that comment's not read, and it's not included in the record, so that council members don't have the opportunity to discuss it, because all that is done is sent to you, it is sent to you through an email. And if you don't get the email or don't read the email, you won't be able to raise it as a discussion item, and you're not going to be able to discuss it prior to the meeting because of the open meeting law. So the only way that the public comments that are presented through the website are going to be heard by you and be able to be discussed by you, be able to be heard by the public and have the public comment on those is if they're made part of the record by reading them into the record. And so it's not a novel idea. If I may approach, Mr. Mayor. May I approach? So it's got some of my notes on it from back in July 2019. But what I'm showing you is the front and the back of a previous council's speaker request form. And the request form included on it, much like your current, it looks much like your current form. But what it also includes is if your comments and questions you would like to share with the council and would prefer not to speak, please complete the comments legibly on the back, and the city clerk will read them. And then at the bottom of the page is the lines for you to fill out if you want the clerk to do something.
Please conclude your comments, Mr. Hess.
Yeah, I will, thank you. So what I'm urging you to do is to change your practice and have the practice of people who take the time to fill out the public comment form on the website to have that be made part of the record. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any items from consent?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to pull item 9B, as in boy. Thank you.
And in addition, I will be pulling item 9A. All right, I'll entertain a motion on the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as listed with the exception, so items 9C through 9I.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? Please vote. All right, I'll start off with 9A regarding the approval of the minutes. After reviewing the minutes as submitted, I noticed a couple of errors on the spelling. Number one was a reference to clause instead of cause. So that needs to be corrected to make sure we're referencing cause within the minutes. The second item was a reference to employment, where in fact, the actual word was performance. So performance needs to be replaced by the reference to employment. And then lastly, there's a reference to amendments, plural, and there was only one amendment that was referenced in this meeting, so it should be singular amendments. So I would recommend that we approve the minutes with those three corrections.
So I just want to clarify for the rest of council. The mayor is referring to the minutes from the October 26 special council meeting. Generally speaking, typographical errors and non-substantive items would not require that the minutes be pulled. Anyone is welcome to let me know if I make an error on the minutes, and I'm happy to adjust them if it's something that is not substantive. But after meeting with the mayor and the city attorney, we decided that the change on page two in the term of employment versus performance did require that the minutes be pulled so that we could make you all aware of that change being made, since it was not just a typographical error.
Yeah, I would say that normally, these are very minor adjustments to minutes, but considering the concerns that are currently being investigated, having these accuracies is important if we vote to approve these minutes. So I, again, will motion that we approve the minutes with the three corrections that I just referenced.
Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question? So we're looking at page two is... Yeah, thank you. Sorry. Am I recognized? I apologize. I went ahead without being recognized. May I be recognized? Sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Tenny.
Thank you. Sorry. So we're talking about page two in the middle, where it says, "Councilmore stated this discussion is off-topic," employment of the city manager in quotes. We're moving that we change the word employment to performance. Is that the reference that we're talking about?
No, it's in the mayor's comments. I'm sorry, up toward the beginning, where he says that we were not here to discuss the specific incident nor the employment of the city manager. He wanted that changed to performance.
Understood. Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, we, in fact, reviewed the audio tapes to make sure that those were, in fact, the accurate references. Motion and a second. Please vote. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I pulled item 9B. It's concerning our council Subcommittee for Appointments and some vacancies that have been filled. So I would like to recognize and thank the following community members who are stepping up. For Planning and Zoning Commission, we have Vice Chair Thomas Riley and Thomas Davis. And for our Tourism Advisory Committee, we have Mr. Robert Combs and Autumn Klein. And then for our General Plan Committee, we have Chair Terri Sappio and Vice Chair Dawn Michaelman. Thank you. I just wanted to recognize them.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve item 9B.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda item 9B.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote. All right, we'll move on to our regular agenda, starting with item 10A.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is for the acceptance of a federal Highway Safety Improvement Program grant for a traffic signal located at Gail Gardner Way and Fair Street. This, as well as a number of other grant programs, are managed through the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, or CIMPO, where they seek funding for various projects throughout the region. Some history on this, this project began about two and a half years ago. It was selected based on a study and review of a number of regional projects that were eligible for funding. The CIMPO Technical Committee approved the grant application in 2022, followed by city council approval of a resolution for the grant application to go forward, and then the CIMPO Board approved the final application in early 2023. The traffic signal has met two safety warrants, and it would take approximately two years to complete the design and construction of the signal. It is 100% funded through a federal grant, so there's no requirement for matching city funds. And we have our transportation manager, Ian Mattingly, here to present this item, as well as our representative from CIMPO, Vinnie Gallegos, the executive director, and if there's any questions for him as well.
Yeah, so I'm probably going to repeat a few things, so I apologize for that upfront. But as the city manager said, Ian Mattingly, Transportation Manager. So we're here today to author- So we're here today to authorize an intergovernment agreement with ADOT, and through that authorization, we're also accepting a grant. As it was said, this is a highway safety improvement program grant, which will be administered by Arizona Department of Transportation. We did bring that to you back in June of '22, after it was identified as the candidate project for the city. The signal has primarily been identified to improve safety for pedestrian and bicycle crossings at that intersection. A side benefit will also, you know, obviously be a better operation of the roadway system inefficiency. The signal and grant process is not related to the rodeo grounds. I know that's been a comment that we've heard. This was done prior to any talk of master planning the rodeo grounds or anything like that, and is not tied in any way to those improvements or the ongoing master plan. We did conduct that traffic signal warrant study. Part of the grant application, obviously, we had to show that the intersection met those warrants. It does meet a warrant for eight-hour traffic and four-hour traffic. The signal will replace the existing four-way stop control. It's a kind of a misconception, it's a three-way. I know it's three main legs, and then there's a minor, you know, west leg, but it's a four-way intersection, so it will replace that. The IGA set force the requirements for each of the party through the resolution, and if it passes, that is effectively accepting the grant, entering into a contract, and then moving the project forward. Under the terms of the agreement, ADOT will scope, design, advertise, award, and administer the construction of the infrastructure. They'll use an on-call consultants or consultants to do that. The city as owner of the public right-of-way will participate in this process, and upon completion, we will assume maintenance responsibility, ownership of the equipment, and we will operate the signal. Again, the grant is 100% federally funded under the program. There are no matching funds. There are no ADOT review fees or other things to be paid. Of course, with any grant, overages beyond what is in the agreement then would become the responsibility of the city. That's typical of any of these federal grants. I will say that the grant cost estimate has been adjusted while we've been in process, because this process has taken some time. And so in the letter that they gave us as an acceptance, you can see that we've adjusted the numbers up due to inflation so that we can cover those anticipated costs and the time period it will take to build the signal, which currently it stands at design in fiscal year '24, right-of-way acquisition in fiscal year '25, and then construction in fiscal year '26. So two, two and a half, three years, somewhere in that range. Staff is recommending that the council approve resolution number 2023-1869, approving the IGA and accepting the grant. With that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Ian, it says here in our packet that the city will acquire all necessary right of ways. You know, that's a very tight corner. I've been driving that four-way stop for like over 40 years, and you've got a creek and a flood zone where the landscape maintenance people are. You have a parking lot on one side, you have a dental office, and then you have the fairgrounds. So I assume you're going to be acquiring land to make right-turn lanes. Have you, do you have any ideas? Can you share any of that information yet?
Yeah, so this, this project does not anticipate a widening of the intersection. This is for a traffic signal installation. So the budget that is included in the packet does include, I think, $45,400 for right-of-way. So when you're dealing with federal grants, obviously, they're very sensitive, and they have a process that must be followed, that will likely, if we have to take any land, that would pay for that, that would pay for appraisals, appraisals. But we don't anticipate that. The signal should, we looked at it, ADOT looked at it, everybody looked at it, it should drop into the existing right-of-way. So this does not have widenings, right-of, you know, additional turn pockets and things like that within it. We anticipate it fitting in within the existing right-of-way, and that money is there to ensure that we, if we have to acquire easements for construction, ADOT pays private property owners for that right while we're constructing, because they follow federal regulations regarding right-of-way. So this money is not intended to purchase large areas of right-of-way, and that, those things are not anticipated.
And then I also like to make another comment. This is on a side, end of town, on the southwest side of town, where we really aren't anticipating any commercial growth other than infill of residential and vacant lots. Isn't it normal if you install a traffic light, you're anticipating an increase in traffic?
So obviously, when we looked at it, you know, it was identified as a safety enhancement project, and a traffic signal gives you enhanced safety for crossings. It has operational benefits as well. We, obviously, we couldn't get the grant if it didn't meet a signal warrant. Signals are not always put in, in areas that are developing, or we think that the traffic signal volume is going to increase. In this case, the warrant study was done and showed that the existing volumes and the existing conditions today meet the warrants. They weren't projected, they were, when they were done, they met the warrant. And they met two warrants, eight-hour and four-hour, which are based on pure volume, side street, and things like that. So it met the warrant now. We have heard comments regarding the fact that the four-way works very well, things like that. Observations of staff and of our consultant show that there are peak hour times when it does not operate that well, and there are backups. The signal will alleviate some of that, but it met a warrant now, not on future growth or anything else. It met it now.
Okay, and then lastly, I'd like to direct your attention to the corner of Copper Basin and White Spar, where the Safeway is. Several years ago, a young lady lost her life at the traffic light.
Excuse me, councilmember, but that's off topic.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Can't Tell Me.
Thank you, Mayor. Ian, you know, I have gotten, and I'm sure we all have, over the last couple of weeks, many, many, many emails, phone calls from concerned neighbors. So when I get that much pushback, if you will, and that many people involved and not wanting this, I have to question why. So my, my question is, I was given a, a letter that you participated in back in June, and at the bottom of the letter, basically, it says, "If the signal is not desired, the grant award can be declined, and the existing stop control can continue to provide adequate vehicle level of service for many years, although we may want to look at pedestrian safety enhancements in lieu of the signalization." That was actually a comment from you, given to me by some of the neighbors that live in that area. So my question is, would it have been prudent for the city to have set up a temporary signal at that location for a minimum of 60 days to test it, so that the neighbors, instead of just trying to visualize what it's going to be like, or try to get a hold of a report, wouldn't it have been better just to have them see this operate, and maybe you guys watch that? Because we have now, it says here, till 2027, and I asked you through email, hang on one second. "If council were to table the resolution adoption, would the funding go away?" The answer was not necessarily. We have to let them know before June 30th of 2024. Is there any possibility that we can listen to these neighbors in bulk? There's probably 40 to 45 of them that have voiced a big concern about this, the fact that it's not needed in their opinion. Is there any way we can do a test before we spend this money on this area without letting them actually not hope they can visualize, but see the effects of this stoplight? We can rent one, I don't know if we own one, but what would be the trouble of actually setting up a stoplight there for a minimum of 60 days and letting everybody use it, try it out, view it? Your department can come down, take notes. That way, it's not all a big secret. Everybody knows what the effect is going to be in the neighborhood, because obviously they're concerned. So I'm just advocating for them. I don't think we'd be getting the pushback if they were not severely concerned, and I think we owe it to them to either prove them wrong or prove them right.
Yeah, so, so there were several things said there, so I'll try to address them. So just as, as background, why didn't we have public meetings? Why didn't we do those things? Traditionally, when we put in signals, we, the decision is made for safety or for operational improvements. It's typically not related to opinions of how the system should operate, typically. And typically, in my experience, and I can only go in my experience here, is that signals are desirable by the community. They're typically asked for and not provided because they don't meet warrants, and we don't have the funding for them. So this is a new realm we're in, where we've identified a safety problem, found money to go get, 100% funding, putting in an improvement that will improve efficiency and operation of the roadway. So all the conditions say that things will be better, and so that's an overlook on my part. I guess I've learned a lesson here, is that typically, they're desirable and they are wanted. For instance, Prescott Lakes Parkway and Sun Dog, we are moving forward with that. We didn't have public meetings, there was no backlash, nothing. So that's one of the reasons why maybe that step was missed. Does it add benefit? That's the other question. And specifically to that, a temporary signal, so you did write that to me, and I appreciate you letting me at least see that in advance so I could prepare. And I, we tried to provide that to the other council members, I don't know if you've seen this, but it's my opinion that a temporary signal, we, I think we know what a signal will do, and I can say what a signal will do. A signal will, for one, increase the pedestrian safety, I believe it will, and statistically it shows it gives better protection for crossers and users. But apart from that, what are the vehicular impacts? It will reduce the need for everyone to stop. I think we're all aware of that. So if you're on Gail Gardner today, and there's no side street traffic on Fair, it doesn't matter, because you have to stop, and then you speed up again. And that is a quasi-traffic calming effect, and it could be that that's one of the reasons, I mean, I would suspect that's one of the reasons or things that we're seeing as a negative from the community. I haven't, in my time since I've, we came in June, I've heard some comments from people, quite a few, but I think, mine's more like nine or 10 have reached out and met with me or talked with me, and then I've invited them and kept them up to date on this process. But we know that when you put the signal in, if you operate it according to how we should operate signals, is that when there's no traffic on Fair, traffic's going to be more efficient on Gail Gardner, and it's going to keep moving. So that's going to improve conditions, but it's also going to make people go through that area at around 30 miles an hour, 35 miles an hour. So if that is the, that's what a signal is going to do for us?
Ian...
Yeah, go ahead. You can interrupt anytime.
I don't mean to interrupt you. You, you just said a few minutes ago that you've never gotten a pushback, because generally the signals are welcome, and they're probably, in many cases, long overdue. And I'm not saying they aren't in this case either. But again, the signal to me is the fact that these neighbors have reached out to probably each and every one of us with these major concerns. And remember, you're an engineer. I don't know if these people are engineers, or probably not. They don't understand your job. It's a difficult thing to know it. You know it because that's the job you do. But sometimes we have to set up a prop, if you will, or just to show the people, because I think if they could see it and operate it on a temporary basis ahead of time, maybe their reaction would be completely different. It's just, it's just going to be helping them to be able to operate and function through that and see what it looks like.
And then I'll just follow up a couple of other things. Then, we do not own a temporary signal. We've never operated a temporary signal. The one that you showed was, it's traditionally used for construction projects, but I don't see that it could not be used for this purpose.
They're rentable. You can rent one.
Yeah, it's a rental. So is it possible? It's possible. Is it going to get us some answers that we need? I can't determine that. When we install a signal or change that? Yeah, I would, I would assume that certainly it can be programmed. And that's one of the things that I mentioned, is that if a signal was, let's say that the problem with a signal was that those negative aspects of the efficiency were not wanted, you can operate an actual installation. Say we went and got the grant, and we put in an actual signal, you can operate a signal. For instance, in off-period times, when you're not peak, you could flash it, so that it operates as a four-way stop in a similar condition as it does now. During regular hours, you could choose to run fixed timing, where you just have it change back and forth. These are inefficient ways to run a signal, but they are options for things when the traffic levels are lower, to keep some of those benefits of the four-way stop, if that is what the issue is. But yeah, so I don't have much more to say about that. We don't own one, it could be done, it's just the questioning, will it give council, the ultimate decision-makers, the information you need to make a good decision?
I think it would be very helpful for council members to have that go out there for 60 days during a regular day. Hopefully, there'll be an event at the rodeo grounds. We should be able to view that in all the different circumstances, if nothing else, to put their fears to rest. I would feel much more comfortable if these people were satisfied. I know you can't satisfy everybody, but I, you know, 40 years in my business, I knew, I realized people were not visual, and I would have to bring props in all the time, and then they'd see it, and they'd go, oh, I, now I get it. And I think that we, we can do that. They're not that expensive to rent, but I think we're going to, all of us will probably get a lot of information to be able to participate in using that and seeing how it functions and how it's going to function in the neighborhood.
Councilman Tenny.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll concur with some of the things that Councilwoman Can Tell Me has shared in terms of the majority of the feedback that we've gotten from, from people in town, and a lot of them identifying themselves as having lived nearby has been negative. I will admit, so I'm not, I'm not a traffic engineer, as you know, and I will admit that as I have spent the last 40 years as well, like Councilman Rusing, driving through that, including recently, I kind of scratched my head, and I think, is there, is there a need for this? So I'm kind of conflicted about this, but I am inclined, as you probably know, to, to rely on the opinion of experts, not my, my gut on things or my anecdotal observances, but what data shows us. And I'm hearing from experts with data that it's warranted there already, and certainly as, as traffic increases marginally in the future, it may be more warranted. Can you think from, from your traffic engineer expertise, other downsides of putting this in? I see the downside of using money where we don't need to use it, though, again, it's not local dollars at all, I get that. If there's cost overrun, I get that piece as well. I hate the idea of using any tax dollars unnecessarily, but I do like the idea of tax dollars that I sent to the federal government coming back here to my hometown and being used in a way that's potentially efficient. I'm kind of blathering here a little bit. I guess what I'm coming to is, is this, what are, other than the use of tax dollars and the, the inconvenience of, of construction temporarily? You've mentioned one potential downside that people will go through the intersection at a higher rate of speed. Can you think of any other downsides?
Sure. Well, I mean, there's the operational cost to maintain it. Obviously, if we get it for free, it doesn't cost nothing to add to our inventory and then maintain. So there is a cost to operate, there's electrical costs, maintenance costs, they're relatively low, maybe like $5,000 a year or so. Right now, if you were to drive in a non-peak hour, it would, it operates better in non-peak under four-way stop control. I'm clear on that. Because if it's like 9 o'clock at night on a Saturday, you just drive up, and there's no one there, you stop and you go. So it has to be cycling to either the main line or the side street. So if you come up on Fair, and we've got it resting on green, for instance, on, on Gail Gardner, which is a benefit to them, there is the negative that if you come out of this Doherty or Fair, you have to stop and wait for it to cycle and change. That's a negative. That's a negative. There's the light, maybe, we'll have luminaires. Traffic signals need to have luminaires, so we'll at least have two or three, so there'll be better lighting at the intersection. Now, that's a benefit, but that's also a negative if you live near, that could be a negative if you live near it. Those are the ones that come to mind, yeah.
Overall, though, again, my, my, my non-expert observations tell me there's not a need for this. The data that you've got and the experience that you've got tells you there's a need for this now. Would you say that the, the benefits outweigh? Would you say that the benefits outweigh the deficits?
So during the peak hour, we just had, in study session, we just talked about, you know, we're doing a study to evaluate our current conditions. We will continue to have traffic growth regionally, just even if we don't develop down there. We're going to have more cars on the road because we have more people in the area. So as you get the peak hour delays that we do see, and you do see them, lunch, you can go out there midday, there's some weird peaks out here, but you can get backups on fair going, like northbound backups, that can extend quite a ways back. Those will be reduced during peak hour, so that's good. Another thing is, the rodeo ground as it exists today, or whatever that area is, if it stays rodeo, changes, if that's some kind of special event use, you can operate a signal to, you can modify the timing to help that area clear or not clear, however you want to do it. You can't really do that with a four-way stop, although you can use a police officer. But I'm just, we're going through negatives and positives. Those are positives. You can, when you push it for a pedestrian, if I'm handicapped, you know, I get, everyone stops and I get more clearance time. It's very good for that, then that's why it was budgeted. I will say one other thing. We did check, and this information came from the ADOT HSIP manager. So these opinions regarding can we delay, I'm just giving you what he said, and they're saying there could be some flexibility if we need to talk about it more, and so I just want to make sure that Councilwoman Can Tell Me knows that and everybody else knows that. I got this straight from ADOT. I don't know how flexible they are because they seem to want to push IGAs and get them moving. So this was a shock to me that they said, "Well, as long as you do it by that deadline." So while it says that here, I still have concern as staff member because typically we get pushed to meet their deadlines, and so, but they said that, so.
More questions?
Yeah, thank you. That's a very thorough explanation. Can you boil it down for me? Again, my eyes and my brain and the feedback I've gotten says, "We don't need this." But I'm not experts, and I'm assuming that a lot of the folks who've gotten with us are also not experts. You are an expert in this area. Can you tell me yes or no? Do you feel that the benefits of this outweigh the negatives or otherwise?
Yes, so I'm the traffic engineer for the city. I think it's a good decision to take a million-dollar grant and build a signal that meets warrants currently and improves conditions. But I also think that it should be operated in a way that gives us the benefits of it. You know, if you're going to take it and then just flash it 24 hours a day, I don't know that, I don't think that was the intent, and that won't help people cross the street safely if it's in flash condition.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Ian, I share Councilman Tenny's perspective to a certain degree that I don't know that I, I mean, I think I've spent half of my adult life living in that neighborhood, so I know that, I've gone through that four-way a lot throughout my life, both as a pedestrian when I was a teenager and then also as an adult, mostly as a driver. So again, I'll share his sentiment that anecdotally, I don't experience it as that backup. One of the things that I was curious that you had said was you talked about during peak times and congestion, and I guess, kind of piggybacking on our study session today, one of the things that I heard the Strand folks say when they were talking about it is, well, you may experience peak times going through downtown, and that might add, say, say it takes you a minute to get from, you know, through a downtown corridor during normal times, peak time, that additional congestion may take it a minute and 30 seconds or maybe two minutes. Do we have any idea what that, during peak time, what we're looking at in terms of added added time? I mean, and I know that's probably not a question you're prepared to answer, but...
No, it's okay, but I can at least answer it. No, you know, there's synchroanalysis that could be done to see what the savings would be during like off-peak, on-peak. Is it negative or positive during certain peak periods? We have not done that. And you can do that.
Okay. And I guess, the fear I have too is exactly what you kind of talked to about, a signal where if I'm coming from Fry's on that fair street and it's 9 o'clock at night and I'm looking to make a left-hand turn and I'm sitting there waiting. I mean, ironically, I do remember one time sitting behind a stop, someone in a car who was waiting for the stop sign to change, and I was like, you had to like let them know that you can go ahead and turn, sir. But one other point I wanted to touch on is, you mentioned traffic calming as it relates to this. And I will say, I've talked to a lot of the folks in this neighborhood, both as other members of council I've alluded to, received a lot of emails, received a lot of phone calls. I've seen a lot of these folks at the farmer's market again and again and again. I see them in the audience. Hi there, folks. And so I guess one of my questions is, the Gail Gardner neighborhood area plan that has been kind of developed for this neighborhood, and then also, which is my understanding, is being kind of revisited and looked at again now, one of the things that I've heard some of those residents talk about is, if they're going to coexist kind of harmoniously as possible with the rodeo grounds there, one of the asks that they have for the city is some traffic calming ideas. And so I guess in that lens, do you think, because again, what I hear you saying is, if we have a signal here and it's mostly green through Gail Gardner so people can kind of just be able to go through, it would seem to me that that would actually run counterintuitive to traffic calming. So if, but again, I'm not, like Councilman, like Councilman Tenny said, I'm no expert. I'm just speaking from anecdotal experience. So I could be completely wrong, and if I am, please, please pipe up.
No, and that is what, when I would talk to people or meet with people, that's what I expected to hear, is that if you install a signal, then we're going to lose the stop and then the restart. And that is like a quasi-traffic calming feature of this. What I would say is that, you know, I would say that you should look at them as two different things. We don't use intersection, we should not use intersection control as traffic calming devices, because when you install like, for instance, a four-way, it can do that, but if it's not installed properly and people feel like they're just being needlessly stopped, it can lead to violations and things that are problematic in another way. But what I would say is that if we want to address things that are going on on Gail Gardner, we don't keep like the four-way and not have a signal. We put in something that operates well there, and then we control the speeds in other ways through our traffic calming policy or improvements that we identify when we look at that area, like raised medians or things, to treat the entire area so that people drive properly and they get through the area efficiently.
Well, and I guess to that end, Ian, I'd ask you, like, on Doherty, on the leg that kind of runs.
Yeah, Doherty.
Yeah, Doherty, yeah, that leg. Did we do, we did do at some point some traffic calming there, correct?
Yeah, and that's because that's a local street, not a collector, and people were bypassing Gail Gardner and going on to there to try to beat cars off the...
As a teenager, I did it often, so I understand.
So then, so you know, we have classifications of roadways. We just talked about arterials, collectors. That's the problem, that's one of the issues with Gail Gardner. It's like a Rossa. There's a lot of fronting people who live there, and they have to like live with all that traffic and volume and these impacts, but the traffic still should be there. And so our current policy allows us to like go, "Hey, don't go over here, that's local. Stay on Gail Gardner." And then we need to find new ways to address and get them to drive properly out on Gail Gardner. But that's the difference. We can't today go and put speed humps on Gail Gardner. It doesn't meet emergency response needs. It doesn't meet the goals of a collector, which is to move traffic efficiently, and it's part, trucks can be there. So we have to look at other things, but...
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things, is, Ian, is Gail Gardner getting busier?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Traffic volumes in general are going up on all our streets, you know, 1% or so per year. So yes, it's increasing.
Well, the question I have is, you know, I was wondering if it was getting substantially busier, because I do know that, that a lot of times I'll, to avoid Miller Valley, I will cut across there, especially if I have to go to Willow Creek. And so I was just wondering, you know, if you'd noticed any, you know, cutoff traffic that, you know, may not have been there before. And the other thing is, is you mentioned in your opening statement, a driver of pedestrian and bicycle safety. So could you expand on that?
Yeah, so the grant looked, Simco conducted a regional safety plan, and so it's region-wide, Prescott was included, but that basically identified locations where we had fatalities and serious injuries. And then they focus on vulnerable users like bicyclists and pedestrians. So when we look at HSIP funding, it's scored, you know, you have to have projects that qualify. So those projects, several projects were identified in the area, and that one was identified because we had a fatality and some other things that happened over a five-year period. And so it's intended that a four-way stop, while people do stop, it doesn't give the same level of control as a signal. So that helped it to score well and was, and identified it as a project that was eligible for the HSIP funding. So the signal is being installed primarily as a safety improvement for pedestrian access. And to me, that's important, especially if you're near a place where there's events, and Gail Gardner also has sidewalk. It's also got apartments. It's got, you know, some of our, I'm not going to say, but it's got a lot of apartments, multifamily homes, so you have people using those types of facilities. So that's a good improvement. We can do improvements just to improve traffic safety, and it was identified for that. Now, obviously, we couldn't build it if it didn't meet a warrant, and I've told, I've told people who don't want the signal that it wasn't on my personal radar for signalization as one of the top priority signals. Prescott Lakes and Sun Dog was, and I'm watching Gail Gardner and West Ridge, you know, up the way, and there's other ones, Willow Creek and Pleasant Valley Drive. We were focusing in on those. But when this one was identified for safety, I had to look at it, we did, and it met warrants. And then I took a better look at it and I did some counts and things, and I saw that elusive congestion, we'll call it that, but, so that's my answer. It's, that's the safety element of this.
Well, do you think that the folks in that neighborhood feel that if a signal goes in, that all of a sudden, that's kind of like the camel's nose getting in the tent, and all of a sudden, that's, you know, an opening for more and more, not regulation, but, but attention on that neighborhood?
Maybe. I mean, it's, it was poor timing. Honestly, this was moving along. We didn't hear much. It was, it's a two-and-a-half-year process. I personally didn't hear any, maybe people didn't see it, but even after we first came out with it and the application went in, I didn't get a lot of comments from people. But it seemed to coordinate with some concern or attention drawn to the area by the rodeo. I'll just say that. And feeling like it was somehow tied and that was going to blow this area up maybe, or it was this big traffic conglomeration coming in. So I'm just, I'm linking it myself to that comment, but I could see that. It's, right now, it's, you know, feels like a residential collector to these people, and maybe it's changing, and that's not a good thing to have that signal come in, but...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Can Tell Me.
Yes, Ian, just two, two quick questions. So if we were to get this light there for a million dollars, not the temporary one, but the permanent one, is it true that these lights today are completely programmable? So you could, for example, when the rodeo people are let out, they could then program that to go, you know, the light would go off or be in, you know, whatever, just constant green, but they, and then at the end of the night, when these people are gone, could this go back and function like a four-way stop? I've seen these lights in places in Phoenix that do that.
Yeah.
So is it programmable? Is that the model that we're getting?
Yeah, so this will have, obviously, if we build this, it'll have full detection, so it'll see every leg of the intersection. You can program it to have timing sequences already pre-programmed that we either activate when we know special events are coming, or, you know, they have police panels, which a police officer can go out there and just sit on the curb instead of being in the street and just hold the time and just run greens to get people in and or out. It can, we can program it so that on a regular day, we operate in a normal way. We vary the timing at every time of day, and then even at a certain time of night, let's say it's after 7:00 or after 9:00, it could go into four-way flash, and then we could bring it out a four-way flash at like 5:00 AM or 6:00 or 7:00 AM. You can do all these things. I'm just answering the question. Is that possible? It's all possible.
And then just additionally, I'd like to just throw this out there to the, to the council here. I'd like to propose that we table this subject for 60 days and get it, have a test on this, and let the neighbors view this, and then have them come back into a room, and I'd like to have the feedback from each and every one of them before we make this purchase. Looks like we've got a little bit of time. I don't think it's going to hurt anything if we hurry up and try to make this happen. I don't know if the council members feel the same, but I, I think it warrants a little bit more looking into, just to make sure that they're, they know what's happening and what's coming up.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'd like to move into public comment now before we decide exactly how we're going to proceed. So I think we have a number of people that'd like to address the council.
We do, Mayor. The first card I have is from, I believe it's Roy Smith.
My name is Roy Smith. I'm a resident of Prescott. And dear council people, I have some comments. Mine are quite brief. My main comment is, we have a national deficit. We don't have to spend the money, but we're anxious to do that. I think we have to have a good reason to do that, and I haven't heard the good reason yet. It's like the road proposed through the dells. It's a solution looking for a problem. We're good at looking for problems when the solution is often staring us in the face. And I think the comments have been made on that subject. It's a plan, the traffic light, that only Simco could have devised in a need to justify its existence. Their plan to place a road, the Sun Dog Connect, adjacent to our proposed regional park is an example of their thirst for projects. I use Gail Gardner every day, evening, rush hours. I've never had to wait more than 10, 15 seconds to get through, and I enjoy the stop there. It's pleasant. And the reason is, in a community like we have, it's the civility and the courteousness of people who stop at the light and wait for the next person to go through. Traffic lights do not do that because people don't like the authority of a light and run the lights. This is happening all the time. It's appalling to see the extent to which that is happening in Prescott. So keep it as it is. It's working. I don't see any reason to change it, and I think it's a bad use of my taxpayers' money and yours. Just because we have the money, we don't have to spend it. Thank you.
Ann Marie Taylor.
Honorable Mayor and Council, my name is Tana Karen, and I'm a member of the Gail Gardner...
Ma'am. Ma'am, I called Ann Marie Taylor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Ann Marie Taylor, and I live on Gail Gardner. I think the problem is, no one's talking about the elephant in the room. The problem on Gail Gardner is speeding, and Ian hit the nail on the head when he said, "Everyone stopped at the four-way stop, then they speed up again." It's incredible, the traffic that we see go by there, going much more than the speed limit. I've lived in the neighborhood for over 20 years, and I have never, ever seen a police officer out there issuing speeding tickets on Gail Gardner. And I don't know of any traffic lights in any other residential street in Prescott. There are other busy streets such as Park Avenue, Mount Vernon, Pleasant, Rossa, to name a few. On Rossa, they have some blinking speed signs, and I think that those would work well in our neighborhood if, if we needed any kind of signage at all. But there are other options to slow down the traffic on Gail Gardner. Thank you.
Sarah Michelle Taylor.
Mayor and Council, my name is Sarah Michelle Taylor, and I live literally by that dentist office right on fair in Gail Gardner. I'm working with the neighborhood on updating the outdated 20-year-old neighborhood plan to coincide with the city's master plan. In 1998, the city council reaffirmed a commitment to eventually pursue the development of an east-west connector. That has not happened. In June of 2002, when the Gail Gardner plan was being revised, it was noted in a statement verbatim, "Residents along the newly-developed Gail Gardner Way..." verbatim, residents along the newly-developed Gail Gardner Way received promises by the city that were not kept. Residents did not expect the increase in speed, the residential character, and the feel of Gail Gardner Way that has degraded significantly with a pronounced creep of commercial development moving north to south from Iron Springs Road. Our biggest concern is the most dangerous areas on Gail Gardner is the S-turns intersecting near both Par Drive and Fairgrounds and Shimmer that would go beyond acceptable safety norms. The city has acknowledged the traffic severity of this area by posting various signs such as hidden drive, congested area ahead, truck entrance, and rather confused dispersment of no parking signs. This coupled with the installation of speed humps on Dority and Fair and Shimmer confirms the city is aware of a traffic circulation density and speed problem that is in this area already exists. In addition, the neighborhood has observed considerable increase in vehicular speeds. Ian spoke about it today. Most residential areas are 25 miles an hour. Gail Gardner, 30. And Ian had said 30 to 35. 35 is what most people start at when they just enter the intersection of Fair and Gail Gardner and move past that stop. If there's a light put in at Gail Gardner and Fair, I will never be able to turn out left of my driveway. We need more calming. If I, if I can't turn left, I can only ever turn right, that's just going to back up other traffic. In June of 2002, the Gail Gardner plan was considering a three-way stop at the intersection of Gail Gardner and Oregon, a high-traffic touch point. No tra, no changes were made. An increase in traffic has also aided, added to the increased risk of traffic moving on and off Gail Gardner, specifically between the two blind curves in closest proximity to the Fairgrounds, Fairgrounds Avenue, as well as Dority. Because of this, and with the express goal of the calming traffic, we request a four-way stop be installed at the intersection of Dority and Gail Gardner. This is the longest and straightest line of sight between two dangerous curves. It would have a positive and predictable effect with slowing traffic. Additions of slow blink curve ahead signs would support this as well. Without overstating the case, calming traffic on Gail Gardner specifically between these curves is required, not recommended. I ask you all today that you postpone this agenda, item 10A, for later until the city's staff provides the council and the public. No one has talked to me. I showed you where my house is, and the information was not included in the voting meeting packet. We have over 70 photos along Gail Gardner to show you how dangerous some of these points of intersection as well, documented line of sight on street parking, bike route, and side route concerns. These should be addressed prior to the light. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Manuel.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm the newbie in the neighborhood. I've lived on Fairgrounds Avenue for 66 years. My family bought the property in 1940, and I am now raising the fifth generation of my family on that property. I believe the elected officials and the public do deserve more documentation. Mr. Mattingly, according to your, the memo that I passed out to the council, you also talked to PFD about this stoplight, but did not bother to consider the families and the citizens of the neighborhood. We're getting tired of being called second-class citizens or treated like second-class citizens versus PFD. Everybody talks to them about, what if we do this? What if we do that? But nobody has involved the city, citizens of the neighborhood. Brandon, I believe you can talk most wisely about how everybody feels about the stoplight because of your time at the farmer's market. Just a couple notes from Prescott PD Joyce Anderson, from 1-1, 2016 to 123122, there have only been 12 car crashes at this intersection, nine with no injuries, three with injuries, but no noted level of injuries like, oh, did I just tweak my back? Or, oh, did I have to go to the hospital? There was one unfortunate car versus pedestrian fatality, but nobody's told you that the driver was impaired. It had nothing to do with the intersection, it all had to do with the driver. If we could use pedestrian crossings like Mount Vernon has, I think that would solve your pedestrian safety because the four-way stop does work well. I've ridden my bike through that area when Fairgrounds was a straight shot down all the way to wagon trailer, wheel road. It's not needed. Just according to ADOT, there are manual, just because of intersection meets warrants doesn't mean it needs a traffic signal. And as far as traffic calming during the rodeo, I have pictures where the traffic is backed all the way up Gail Gardner, all the way up Fairgrounds Avenue, and all the way over Shimmer Drive. A four-way stop down at Fair and Gail Gardner is not going to stop that. The entrance to the Fair or the rodeo grounds is on Fair Street, so nothing's going to stop that until they get Fair Street figured out and PFD does something about that entrance. Thank you.
Shannon Prehn.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman? My name is Shannon Prehn, and I live on the west side of Prescott. I feel passionate about this project because I am a pedestrian, I'm a bicyclist, and I'm a motorist. I'm a Prescott native, born here, and now I'm raising my two small children here. I want to thank you for your service and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to stand before you and express my opinions and to be a part of this important process. So why am I here today? To urge you to say no to the proposed traffic light at Gail Gardner and Fair Street, and to hope that you can take a little more time to consider alternatives to a traffic light that will actually accomplish the goal to reduce pedestrian fatalities at this intersection. After all, this traffic light is truly to reduce pedestrian fatalities as stated as the purpose for implementing and securing grant funding for this project. Then I want to see what other options there are available for pedestrian crosswalk safety other than an unprotected walk signal sign on a green light. As much as I don't want to see a new traffic light go up in a rather sleepy part of town, I also don't want there to be any further loss of life or property. The reason I am here today is to hope that you will take a second look at this project, reconsider it, and know that you can reject the grant funding for a new traffic signal because there are alternatives that can increase motorists' awareness of pedestrians and bicyclists. As we know, traffic signals aren't necessarily safer. There are known drawbacks such as increased speeds, signal compliance, driver fatigue, green means go, increase in alternative routes such as the use through Dority Street, congestion in localized areas, operation and maintenance costs of the signal, and increase in driver frustration. How is any of this safer for pedestrians? Have you been presented with alternative devices such as pedestrian activation systems? This is where you wave your hand or press a walk button and lights flash on either the street, the crosswalk, or an overhead sign. An example of this was recently implemented on the crosswalk on the east side of the courthouse across from Union Street. This could be utilized in lieu of a traffic signal and benefit both pedestrians and bicyclists. It would not require the installation of a traffic light or disturbance of overhead utility lines. I would like to point out that Mr. Mattingly stated in his email of June 13th of this year that the four-way stop controlled intersection was not being monitored for future signalization prior to it being identified by a Simco consultant. So I urge you to take more time because a traffic light isn't going to create a safer intersection, it's just going to create more hazards. Thank you for your consideration.
Tana Karen.
I'd ask you to keep your comments and applause to a minimum so we can maintain decorum here, even though it seems like most everybody's supporting this. Let's maintain some decorum. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Council, my name is Tana Karen, and I live in the Gail Gardner neighborhood. The Gail Gardner and Fair Street level of accidents, 12 in 10 years, including one very sad DUI caused fatality, comes nowhere near the MUTCD recommended level of eight accidents per year for installation of a traffic light. These are one-way roads, one-lane roads, not two-lane thoroughfares that connect with it. Conjoint individual or anecdotes created, create objective reality. Westside residents do not experience traffic circulation problems incurring on the four-way stop of Fair Street and Gail Gardner. Residents have counted traffic even in rush hours and at most wait 10 to 15 seconds, four to five cars, and vehicles quickly clear the intersection. Traffic studies have concluded that various types of traffic lights do not ease nor calm the flow of traffic, but instead compel longer wait times and increase speeding. Also, more importantly, research shows that mostly due to drivers racing orange lights and making up for traffic light delays, that traffic lights actually increase the rate of head-on tee and rear-end accidents and fatalities. The antiquated 85th percentile rule of setting safe traffic speeds no longer applies as urban traffic now averages 15 to 25% faster speeds in the U.S. What Gail Gardner needs is traffic calming for safety. For these reasons, Westside residents are instead requesting what is really needed along Gail Gardner Way. These traffic calming and safety measures, low cost, low tech, and low upkeep. One, pedestrians crossing and yield signs plus fluorescent pavement stripes at the main intersections of Oregon, Fair, Dodery, and Rodeo Drive. At both blind curves going north and south, put up a slow blind curve ahead sign, and closer to the curves, a 25 mph sign. A three-way stop sign at Oregon Avenue, a four-way stop sign at Dodery Streets. The sudden and supposedly urgent need of a traffic light at exorbitant cost to each U.S. taxpayer, plus running costs and upkeep that the city would be responsible for, including commuter, computer administration, is rather coincidentally timed, arising last year the week after the rodeo expansion plan submission to council. Said expansion is not funded, not city-approved, not needed as a venue space, and not wanted by a community majority. Thus, an improbable futures exponentially higher vehicle volumes regulation by way of a traffic light is unwarranted given current conditions suffice unto the day. Thank you for your consideration.
David Klein.
My family owns Iron Springs Manor Mobile Home Park. It's a little bit further north on Gail Gardner, and we share the entrance onto Gail Gardner with the school, bus barn. I don't know how many buses are there, 150 or so, but we have a problem now with people racing from the stop sign to get to Iron Springs, and you can't get out on the road. We have 81 residences there, plus the buses, and I went over and talked to the bus barn, and they have the same problem. So we're against any sort of green lights at all at that intersection. It just promotes people going faster in both directions. Thank you.
Gwen Parker.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for letting me speak with you. I, of course, am up here again about, along with everybody else, the traffic signal, which has been a huge concern of mine from the very beginning. I live off of, right off of Dority Street, and I go through that intersection, you know, I'm in sales. I could go through that intersection eight to 10 times a day. I've never had a problem going through there. It's always stop and go. The only time I've ever had an issue is when there's something going on at the rodeo grounds, and then it's backed up everywhere. So I've been told over and over again that this has nothing to do with the rodeo grounds, but I think today, twice, it was confirmed that it really does have something to do with events happening at the rodeo grounds. So I did, I asked Sarah if she would please pass out this packet that I wanted to just go over real quickly. And so the first page just shows, this came from Mr. Mattingly. He emailed it, and it was on August 12th, 2022, and it included the final traffic signal warrant analysis. And it's by Strand Associates. They did the, the analysis. So, and then right up, then on the next page is just the initial request for the study, I guess, which that was my initial question was, why did we even, why was that even brought up? A traffic light right there? I have no idea because traffic has always flowed very smoothly through that intersection, 30 years worth, I can tell you, many times a day. So then I also wanted to, just on the next page, just shows you that this is the Gail Gardner Neighborhood Plan that shall mention that we are, you know, we are revising that right now, but this was adopted by the city council in 2000, and it was updated in 2002, which since we are revising it right now, but it makes it on good authority. I take it anyway because it's all that we have right now. It does say on here that in 2002, traffic counts indicate that traffic has not increased significantly with counts averaging 9,200 cars daily. Okay? So I took that number, and then I went and looked at the 15-minute interval numbers that they had for the traffic counts, which by the way, in 2022, after the rodeo, we saw some girl sitting at the intersection, and she was clicking away, counting. And I finally asked her, after going through four or five times, I said, what are you doing there? And she said, I'm counting cars. For, you know, for why? They're thinking about putting a traffic light in. I was like, oh, my gosh, got to be kidding me. So anyway, I thought that was an interesting way to count cars. Anyway, so on this page, you can see that I took the numbers from the traffic analysis, I added it all up. You get a total of 9,664 cars passed through the intersection. And in 2002, I'm sorry, it was 9,200. That's a total of 464 more cars through that intersection based on their study, okay? Their analysis. The other thing I wanted to mention is that warrant one and warrant two are for vehicular volume. It's not for pedestrian volume, school crossing, signal system, crash analysis, roadwork, intersection. It's for volume, and that's it. So I, pedestrian, I would have to question that because I also walk my dogs along.
Ms. Parker, please conclude your remarks.
Okay, I'm going along, okay. So on the next page, it also says that, and it also talks about the Prescott Parkway intersection. It says that intersections could be considered for installation of traffic signals. It says although intersections meet traffic signal warrants, it is not required that a signal be installed. Again, Strand Associates, their words. The other thing I just wanted to mention was that, that we talked about earlier, was from January of 2016.
Ms. Parker, please conclude your remarks.
Okay. There were 12 crashes, and this was from Gail Gardner, Iron Springs, to Gail Gardner-Gurley. There were 12 crashes, only one fatality, and that was the entire length. It wasn't just the intersection. So thank you for your time. I hope you'll take those facts. Those are factual numbers, okay? Thank you.
Lois Fruworth.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Lois Fruworth. I'm a resident of Ridgewood Drive. That is part of the hillside up above Gail Gardner. That includes the preserve, Enchanted Canyon, the heritage forest trails, and probably three or five other HOAs that are up there. We use Gail Gardner all the time because the only other way to get out of our hillside is to go out the back through forest trails and out to Iron Springs, which only works great when you're either going to go north or you're going to go to Skull Valley. So this is our method of getting out. The reality is, is that the entrance there at Westridge by the RV storage facility, we've added probably hundreds of homes up the hillside in the last five to seven years. And therefore, yes, dwelling time is getting a little bit longer. We love the stop sign because that's your opportunity. If all works right and the left Iron Springs holds people back, you actually can get out of our neighborhood and make a left. With lights constantly going, we're going to need them timed so we have some way of getting out of our neighborhood. And I know Iron Springs needs to be kept to traffic, so I don't know how this will ever work with our neighborhood. So if we're going to consider this, and we need a traffic study to understand how we're going to get out of our neighborhood in the future, especially when you add the complexity on Whipple Street between the farmer's market and, more importantly, U.S. Vets, there is a lot more traffic coming from multiple directions. The stop sign adds sanity right now. I don't know what the solution is without it. Thank you.
Bonnie McMinn.
Bonnie McMinn, Prescott, Arizona. Maybe I'm the last one. So I think Councilman Tenney actually said it best, which is, you've mentioned data. And I think. And I think for at least the people back here, and perhaps council, we do not have the data. There was no data in the packet, today's packet. There was no grant application, no submission. The traffic studies are alluded to, the safety studies are alluded to. I haven't seen the data. I went back to June 28 of 2022, when this was initially voted. This council, this council, except for, yeah, no, you weren't on yet, but the bulk of this council approved the application for the grant. There was no data at that time either. So, you know, we're hearing about traffic warrants, and I went to the Federal Highway Administration. There are eight, nine specific warrants. The two that this strand, which we don't have the data for, they indicated the eight-hour and the four-hour. Well, that's pretty easy. But you mentioned peak hour, Mr. Mattingly. We don't have that. Pedestrian is very concerning, but warrant number four is pedestrian volume. We don't have that. We don't have school crossing, coordinated traffic signals, as Ms. Freworth mentioned, crash experience, minimal, minimal crash experience, and then roadway network. We don't have that either. So I think this is not quite ready for prime time. I think a lot more information has to happen. We've talked about, Mr. Mattingly admitted that with the green light, we'll have increased speeds. I drive this myself frequently. I think this warrant, this is, actually has turned into a study session, but I think it needs to be labeled as a study session, so that we can actually understand where this data is from. I would love to see what green, so green, what is it? Green Light Engineering did the original traffic safety study. We don't have that information, and whatever strand presented today in the study session should, should have actually been applied here as well. But again, the packets are empty of data, and I think that this really does need to be tabled until we can discuss it further and have a real study session and really talk about this. Thank you very much.
Ralph Hess.
I'm Ralph Hess of Prescott, mayor and council. One of the good things about being toward the end of the comment period is you get to hear all the good ideas of those who have commented before you. One of the things, I live in the southwest part of Prescott, and so I use this Gail Gardner passage to get to Iron Springs and sometimes over to Fair Street. So I use it quite often. But the one thing that I hadn't thought about was the civility that was mentioned by Mr. Roy Smith, because, but I do enjoy the fact that when you come to that four-way stop and two people arrive at the same time, one waves, or maybe both, wave, wave the other through. It's a similar experience I have down here at Cortez and Willis, but it is always a kind of a nice feeling when you get that. The other thing that I heard was the comment from, the commenter, who I, I don't know her name, because I didn't hear it quite well, but presenting the alternative of a pedestrian signal, kind of like the one, or just like the one, over here on Cortez, on the east side, east side of the plaza. So that might be a good alternative to consider. The other thing I thought of with regard to Councilmember Conneken Tellme's suggestion that you table this, and if you do table this, and you do have a studies, I ask that you do have, I urge you to have a study session on it before you vote, and that you have a study session in the proximity of the time that you're going to vote. So like, if you're going to vote at the end on the fourth Tuesday of the month, have the study session on the second Tuesday of the month, so that there's a close proximity between the study session, and that people can digest the information and then have you vote on it. And the final comment, I think it would be helpful for us to know if, what the level of interest is in this. There's quite a few people who are commenting here in the chambers, but it would also be helpful to know how many people, or if you know, how many people submitted comments through the city website, and if you do know how many, and whether they were for or against this project. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Well, thank you. I have to agree, the amount of opposition to this signal light that's come to my attention has been really dramatic. It's so many more people are concerned about the light actually working the way it's in, it's proposed to work. And I, I agree that one of the things that wasn't mentioned here is, once you put a signal light in there, then you have the problem with red light running. I mean, we have a lot of red light running problems in the community, and once that light is green, people will go right through that intersection, and sometimes people coming the other way will disregard the light. So that's another concern that would be added by having a traffic signal included here. I'm very aware of some other people who live up in the Preserve area, Enchanted Canyon, who have a very difficult time getting out of Westridge, when there's a lot of traffic being created at that intersection. But at least having the stoplight does create the opportunity for a space for them to be able to exit. Now, I know the original analysis here was done before the rodeo master plan was brought forward for discussion. And with the master plan details, there is an expectation that there will be a substantial additional number of events that occur there over the course of the year, on weekends, et cetera. So that increases the volume concerns, and there's also proposal of changing the entrance and exit of the rodeo grounds, which would potentially impact the efficiency of this particular signal light. So I don't think that has either been considered within the analysis that has been done so far. So we've got traffic volume, and it really seems to only be increasing at about the same rate as our overall population increases. But that's relatively modest, and I just don't see the true need for this at this time, without some additional data for us to be able to make a decision on. Now, I know from the comments that were created, we have until, I think, June 24 to really make a decision on whether we're going to accept this or not. And my question is, if we have such a serious problem over there at Sun Dogs Ranch Road and Prescott Lakes Parkway, could this grant be transferred over to that possible signal light project?
Yeah, so, yeah, and that, that leads me into just a few comments I'd like to make as part of that answer.
Go ahead.
This item is for the approval of an IGA, or resolution for an IGA, for a traffic signal only, and at this location, identified in the grant, based on safety. It cannot be transferred to any other signalized location in the city. It can't be transferred to another type of measure, like pedestrian flasher, traffic calming. So I just want to make sure that you're clear of that. This is for this grant, and this grant only at this location. So alternative pedestrian, no, you can't switch the money. I also want to ensure that, I don't know what's going to happen and what you guys are going to talk about, but I just want to ensure that additional meetings or trials, that analysis would be useful in helping you to make a decision, and if it is not, I mean, I heard a lot of stuff here today, and I didn't hear a lot of stuff that makes it seem like a trial of a signal is going to make some opinions change. That's just me hearing this. So I just want to make sure that if we're going to go down this path, this is a lot of work and a lot of effort, so I just want to make sure that you know that, from me as this traffic engineer, I want to make sure that that is useful to you and the neighbors, and that it has some value, and that's all I need to say.
Well, thank you for that, and I, I think we probably do need to have a little more public analysis of this. A lot of times when we're offered the opportunity to apply for a grant, sometimes these grants take on a life of their own, and I think that's kind of where we are now. When we approve the, the ability to apply for a grant, which is what happened quite a few months ago, and then we were awarded the grant, then it starts to move forward in a very deliberate and expected conclusion. And I think that's where we are today, without, I think, providing enough legitimate public input and be able to review all the claims that this is going to provide so much additional safety. So I would be of the opinion that probably creating another study session where all this data and background can be brought forward, so we really understand exactly what it is that this potential traffic signal will provide for us, and we listen to the people that are going to be most impacted, which is the Gail Gardner neighborhood, because I tell you, I, I go through that intersection multiple times a week, and I agree, stopping there, and usually the traffic flows very, very safely. But a signal light with a green light will certainly increase speeds, and then you have more problems negotiating that S-turn right before, right after you get to Shimmer. So there's a number of additional components to this that really didn't exist at the time the original grant and analysis was, was begun. Those are my comments.
Mayor, if I may, listening to this and hearing a lot of the, I'll call it trepidation on the part of council, what you're asking staff to do is very significant in time and in effort, and it's rehashing a lot of information that's already been discussed and approved. It is, it's not my recommendation that we go forward, that if council chooses not to do this today, that we just don't move forward with the grant. That would be my recommendation to this council.
Councilmember Rusi, you had a comment?
Thank you. I would just like to say that we were elected by the people of Prescott, and we need to listen to the people of Prescott today. Thank you.
Councilmember Conneken Tellme.
Katie, normally I would have agreed with that, except for the fact that we do have quite a long time. I don't think 60 days is going to make a big difference in this, if I'm reading the responses back from Ian correctly. It's 2024 that we have to let them know by. Is that right?
If, if they stated that, we are in fiscal year '24, so it has to be by June of this, yeah, it's June of '24, so it's six months. The, I think, the comment that I'm, maybe I wasn't clear, but I just want to make sure that, yeah, any additional effort that is gone will bring us closer to a yes, if we're going to go through all that effort, that a yes is even possible. That's all, that's the only thing I mean by that. But he is clear, yes, we have up to six months, according to ADOT, to accept this. That's what they have said to me.
So, so I'm not sure if it needs to be an all or nothing right now, I guess, is what I'm saying. It seems to me like we have enough time to at least indulge them, and you never know what we're going to find out.
Mayor Protam Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I would, I, I'm hesitant to believe that more data is going to change the reality of the facts on the ground, personally. Like, I, I know it's useful to pursue it, but I think if we send city staff out to look at this again, and it comes back with more or less the same data we have right now, or confirms a lot of the same data, and that we're still in a place of saying no to this, that would be fairly demoralizing, I think, to staff, and, and not effective use of taxpayer dollars, in my opinion. And so I would say, in my opinion, again, I don't like to sit here and second-guess experts in their domain. In fact, I really dislike doing that, but in this case, I just, I don't, I'm not compelled to see that there's a path to move forward with this, personally.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'll tell you what, there's been a lot of work done on both sides. I appreciate the public comment. I appreciate your comments, Ian. I haven't heard from Vinnie, but, you know, apparently you don't seem like you need to comment. But I'd hate to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I'd hate to not take advantage of this opportunity, if in fact, there is any redeeming factors about it. And, you know, I, I agree with, Councilwoman Can Tellme, that if, if, if we could do a study with a rental light, you know, that would be my preference, because I, I think that there are good things about this for both sides.
Councilmember Rusi.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that we postpone this decision for 90 days while we collect more data on both sides of the issue, and then bring it back as a study session.
I second.
Councilmember Rusi, was that 90 days or 60 days? I'm sorry.
90.
All right, we have a motion and a second to postpone this decision for a 90-day period to allow additional analysis and a possible.
I think I just need to be real clear on that. The analysis is done, and I don't know that there's additional analysis unless there's specific analysis council would like the city to do.
I'm sorry, we have a motion on the table. We're going to be voting on it.
Thank you.
All right. Please vote.
Passes 4-2. 4-2. 4-2.
The vote for the current item.
It's, I can't change it from adopt, because that's what the item is in there. So the motion is recorded, is what it is, but I need everybody to vote. Okay.
Do we need a voice vote?
No, I just need everybody to push the button on their screen.
I've done it twice.
Okay, the motion is to postpone for 90 days and then bring the item back for a study session. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
I'm opposed, nay.
Thank you. Passes 4-2.
Hold on, I was a no, just to be clear.
Yep, I got it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm unclear as to what the vote was. Could you please repeat?
So the vote was to postpone the item for 90 days. 4-2.
4-2, thank you.
All right. We got through our first item on our, our regular agenda.
Adoption of ordinance number 2023-1849, authorizing the purchase of real property in and around Glassford Hill, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of real property in and around Glassford Hill pursuant to the terms of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Prescott, town of Prescott Valley, and Yavapai County, city contract number 2022-208, approved by the Prescott City Council on October 24, 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council is aware, our team, in collaboration with regional partners, has been working on this agreement, and it was approved by council at our last voting meeting. The city, per the city charter, land purchases and... The city, per the city charter, land purchases and sales must be approved via an ordinance. So we're back here today to finalize with that approval requirement. So it's already been approved, we just need to approve it through an ordinance. This ordinance does include an emergency clause to make it effective immediately in order to be able to meet the timing for the state land auction, which is scheduled for one week from today. And if needed, I believe Joe was here, but he may not be here now. I think that's, that's it. But if you have any questions, I can attempt to answer that, or I'll have Tyler here.
Councilmember Rusi.
I don't know if we need more discussion. I'd like to make a motion that we move to adopt ordinance number 2023-1849.
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion and second, please vote. You moved item 10C.
Adoption of ordinance number 2023-1848. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of real property to Territory Holdings LLC, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said sale.
Thank you. Mayor, this is a sales agreement for the old City Hall building located at 201 South Cortez Street. The city has been working with Territory Holdings LLC to negotiate favorable terms and conditions related to the redevelopment of the property. Council did have an opportunity to review the terms of the, the agreement in their executive session, and I have deputy city manager Tyler Goodman here to provide an overview of those terms, as well as a request for approval.
Great. Thank you, city manager, and good evening, mayor and council. I will begin this presentation with a little bit of background. This property, 201 South Cortez, appraised for 2.2 million back in January of 2022. It includes 1.3 acres of the old City Hall building, the old legal building, and the adjacent parking lots. This agreement excludes the PD enclosed, the fenced parking lot, which is really good for us and really good for PD. I wanted to take an excerpt. That third bullet point is straight from the Request for Proposals document. I think it helps give context to, to some of the public who may not be super familiar with this. The council put out there that we were seeking highly qualified applicants that specifically proposed a purchase of the property and redevelopment to a multi-story mixed-use, which we defined as a combination of retail, dining, living, office, or other uses, a combination thereof. And the city desires a project that builds upon the downtown redevelopment momentum, incorporates pedestrian-friendly features, and enhances the city's economic base. So that was the goal of council. That's what we put out in the RFP document, and that's what we were hoping to get in responses. The last bullet point, we also included in the RFP that the redevelopment needed to be completed within 36 months of closing, which you'll see that that is included in the agreement. Again, for some background, this is an aerial view of the property that is included, the 1.3 acres. On the top there is the old City Hall building, 201 South Cortez, and then below that is parking lots, the legal building kind of in the middle towards the left, and then more parking lots to be included. So what does this agreement, agreement include? We're going to go through a high-level kind of bullet point list, and I'll, I'll be comprehensive but not too far in the weeds, hopefully, for you. So the sale of the property is for 2.2 million. It includes a mixed-use project consisting of restaurant, retail, and conference space, and approximately 100 hotel rooms. It has the allocation of 13 acre feet of water based on an analysis. The original request was for 15 acre feet, but upon a deeper review and a more comprehensive review, we both, the buyer and the city staff, felt comfortable with 13 acre feet of water being included. And it includes a due diligence period of 18 months, which is in part to help the city vacate Old City Hall completely. As you know, we're still working on this building, and we still have some staff and department functions to move over to this building. So that in part helps us. It'll also help them do their due diligence. But there are specific non-refundable deposits, as described here. There's three. Specifically, the first is $100,000 non-refundable deposit upon the city approving height and design of the project. That will go through a separate review process, including the preservation commission, planning and zoning, and ultimately back to you as the city council for approval on anything having to do with the way it looks and the height. Does it fit in? Does it meet the historical criteria? All of those factors will be considered going forward. Those conditions are to be met within 210 days and no more than 365 days. Moving on to the second deposit, it's $50,000 non-refundable, either 90 days after the first deposit conditions are met, or 300 days of the agreement, whichever is later. And similar, the third deposit, $50,000 non-refundable at 180 days after the first deposit conditions, or 390 days of the agreement, whichever is later. That helps us secure the fact that we still need time to move out, the buyer would like to do a good amount of due diligence, so we kind of built in performance as well as time into non-refundable amounts, which we think gives both sides some decent protections Continuing on, the buyer will pay all closing costs. The buyer will commence construction within 30 days of closing and must complete the construction within 36 months. If construction's not started within 30 days, the city may purchase the property back at the same price. That'd be a council decision. If construction is not completed within 36 months of closing, then the buyer will pay $150 per day as liquidated damages until it is completed. And we did address the centennial tree. The buyer must take reasonable efforts to protect the tree during construction. There will be an arborist on site, paid for by the city, to make sure that if there's any mitigating factors that could occur to help root or branch, that it will be done. We can't guarantee a perfect outcome there, but of course, we will do our best to, to have a professional on site to work with the contractor. And then after construction, the buyer agrees to not knowingly disturb root or branch of the tree while it's naturally living, which is hopefully for another couple, 2, 3, 500 years, whatever it is. The city will reimburse the buyer the cost of moving APS power lines in the alley east of 201 South Cortez in an amount not to exceed $250,000. That number came from a rough estimate given by APS to us, to city staff, to either move or bury, or a combination thereof of, of things to, to remove those power lines, those currently standing power lines that are in the alley. The agreement is not assignable to another entity without the city's approval, so it can't be passed off and passed off and passed off. And then the final point I want to bring up, and there's a map associated with this that I'll click to in a minute, is the right-of-way usage for construction material staging. So the map here highlights, that is old City Hall there, 201 South Cortez, so on the north and on the west sides. The proposal is that the highlighted parking spaces and right-of-way are included within the project site within their fencing for construction material staging. As you know, it's a fairly small lot to redevelop, and they will be redeveloping the entire lot, so there's not going to be free space to store and stage construction equipment and materials. So that is the request. However, we've put in language in the agreement that they will do their best efforts to ensure that the parking is available if construction staging is not needed, and especially, we talked about events, downtown summary events, where we would really like to have that parking, that we will work together in good faith to, to do the best we can to open up some parking when available. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions, and we also have both Stephen and Shane Shumway here, who've traveled a long ways to be with us this evening, so they're, they're here as well.
Councilmember Rusi.
Thank you, Tyler. That was a very complete analysis. If no one else has a question for you, I'd like to ask one of the Shumways to come up and speak.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Shane Shumway. I'm here on behalf of Territory Holdings. I'm here with Stephen Shumway. He's president of our organization as well. I'm also here with Marcy Hurlbert. She's a vice president in our company. She's a local resident of Prescott. We're actually quite proud of Marcy. This year, she was inducted into the Air Force Academy Athletic Hall of Fame, which is truly an amazing accomplishment, so proud of her. Good talk, Marcy. We are grateful that you would consider us on this historic and important location. We understand the historic nature of this location, the amazing architecture and buildings that are already around it. We understand the importance of maintaining, you know, downtown Prescott as a, just attraction for the city. And maintaining that vitality is important to the city, it's important to the community, but it's also important to us. And so we're excited to continue to do that. In any project that we partner on, we strive to do the best we can in taking feedback and implementing it. We'll strive to do that on this project here. We also strive to be good partners in the community where we operate. This includes here in Prescott, where we already do business. As part of a project that we've already done here, we contributed up to 50% to build a community splash pad. We've also refurbished not just one, but two historic buildings here in Prescott. We also empower our associates to find and work with local organizations that need additional resources and help. And since 2020, we've helped over 16 local organizations here in the community. So this project, again, we're excited to be a part of it. We're excited to get started on the important work of the architecture and design and, and what it's really going to look like. We hope to do a building that fits in well with the historic character of Prescott. I'm also happy to answer further questions, if there are any, or if there are community comments, I'd love a chance to address those as well.
Any member of council? I have a question for Mr. Shumway.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. What kind of, it's good to have you here, but what kind of local participation from a construction standpoint do you plan on using?
So we do like to use local subs who are responsive and can be here and have the experience. And we open up bidding to all local subs. So there, we'd love to have them bid on the project and work with us.
Is that what happened on Hilton Garden Inn as well?
Yes, there were multiple local subs on that project, there were.
Thank you.
Councilwoman can't tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question. Have you chosen a designer for the project yet, or is that in-house? Or how will you work with the historic preservation department?
So it will be through an architect that has significant experience designing this type of project.
In historic areas?
In historic areas. And that architect will need to work closely with the historic preservation committee.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm certainly looking forward to having you proceed with this project. It's probably the most highly publicly visible project, and even though the previous awardee was unable to perform as the contract required, it's, I think, very important that the community have a pretty good understanding of what the project will look like. And we want to make sure that, we know you have to do a lot of due diligence here and figure out exactly what underground conditions are before you come up with your final rendition. So take your time with that, because previously, we've seen artists' renditions that really weren't indicative of the final project, and it created a lot of public concern. We have a public comment here?
We do, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
You have another one?
Yeah, I have a comment. I would just...
Councilmember Rusi.
I would just last, like to ask Mr. Shumway about, he did, you did a project in downtown historic Flagstaff, and I would like you to make a few comments, because that seems like you've got experience dealing with communities with historic districts. Thank you.
Yeah, so we did do a project in downtown Flagstaff, was a four-story building with hotel use. That project did entail significant review by a historic preservation committee in the city of Flagstaff, and then doing our best to take those compliments, or those comments, hopefully compliments, too, take the comments and implement them into the project. And by the way, I think the city of Flagstaff is happy with how that project turned out.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Ralph Redardi.
My name is Ralph Redardi. I live at 251 South Mountain Vernon. I'm an 84-and-a-half-year-old resident of Prescott. Thought you'd like to know that. But what I'm not understanding is, you people a year ago casted the vote that the local architect and construction companies were going to be doing this. Then it went to another vote, and it also came out the same, that they preferred it. And he had a drawing of what he intended to put on there, which gave you guys the opportunity to look at it and decide if you liked what you saw, which apparently a few changes were made. My understanding is, we have a little sign there that says shop small. I also know that we also have signs that says shop locally. And the other understanding I know is that all of you are supposed to be working for us, the public. And we was very clear that it was already given to a local company here in town. Now, this one, I believe, is the third one that was on there. I really don't appreciate that as a local citizen, and I don't mean crazy, I mean local here. But I, I'm not understanding why we're changing our mind halfway through there and not having a drawing, but they already, oh, you guys already picked out the mistakes that you saw, or you thought you saw that you didn't like, height or whatever, and it was all brought up clear and, and down, down to what it's supposed to be. Why aren't you guys more open-minded with getting us to understand what the heck's going on with your thinking? You know, election time comes up, and we elect you to do what we, the public, all here in this room, as well as all, all the ones here in Prescott, is what we want. And I would really appreciate you guys rethinking what you're doing, because I know what downtown means to me. It means a lot. And I've been involved in a lot of projects with the city in, in being on committees. And I just, I'm not understanding this. Please be more open-minded, and please rethink this before you vote on it. I really don't think you guys have got it down to what has happened here. And, and money, a lot of times, means a lot of things. But if I'm correct, I think the first, the bid that you guys took was quite a bit more than what you're taking now. Why are we going backwards? Anyway, that's what I've got to say. I really hope you're rethinking about what you have. I've had a lot of people come up and talk to me about it, and they call me Metici. I don't know if you know what Metici is. It's a busybody. And I get a lot of information from people, so please reconsider and think about it before you sign off and have somebody else do it. I would personally like to see a drawing of it. I'd like to see what is done already. So with that, thank you.
Doug Stroh.
Tyler, do you want to respond to any of those concerns?
You know, just as far as the process goes, Mayor, the, the mayor and council gave staff direction at one point to begin negotiating with, with the top-ranked group that came out of the Facilities Optimization and Property Usage Committee. Staff proceeded with that, and for several months did so, bringing back information to council. Those negotiations stopped after that certain amount of time, and council instructed us to proceed negotiations with a different group, ended up being Silo Holdings, now Territory Holdings. That is, that is the process that staff followed. That is, that is the process that staff followed, council's direction essentially.
Thank you, Tyler. Doug?
Mayor and council members, I appreciate being here. My name is Doug Stroh. My address is 1577 Plaza West Drive, and I've lived in Prescott for 32 years. I'm here today to present an accurate summary of the old City Hall selection process. Of course, as you know, the RFP was published in November 2021. The mayor created a selection commission of seven distinguished community members to score the five entities that were received entries. Per the RFP, the scope of the project was a mixed-use project consisting of retail, dining, living, office, and other pedestrian-friendly features. All five design-build teams presented their designs to the selection commission on July 20th, 2022, and the Stro architecture team was unanimously chosen number one, followed by the number-two team, Ponderosa Hotels, and the third-place team was the Territory Holdings. For the city's RFP, the city was to negotiate with the winning team. However, the mayor and council decided to have the Stro team and the third-place team, Sholo Developer, present designs to the city council on September 13th, 2022. Once again, the Stro architecture team was chosen unanimously by council to develop the new mixed-use project. The negotiations began in late October. Some of the demands made by the city included a non-refundable down payment of $100,000 prior to guaranteeing water for the project or defining height limitations. So that certainly extended the negotiations because not too many people would take those terms. Eventually, after about five months of negotiations, on about April 1st, Phoenix Rising, our developer partner, was ready to sign a contract for $2.5 million, and without any additional funds coming from the city. Unfortunately, at about the same time, the president of Phoenix Rising, Michael Sung, had a family emergency. Michael then had his attorney send an email to the city explaining the situation and asked for a three-week extension in order, and that he was going to sign the deal after he took care of his parents. The city declined and refused a simple three-week extension. The city sent an email to Phoenix Rising, not Stro Architecture, on April 10th, 2023, stating they were no longer going to work with them. The city did not notify Stro or issue a cure notice. We felt the logical solution to losing our developer was to team up with the second-ranked team, Ponderosa Hotels. Per the RFP, the city stated they would negotiate with the next highest-ranked team, which was Ponderosa Hotels. Our improved team now consisted of all experienced experts who have lived in Prescott for many, many years, including Gillian Haley, Haley Construction, Brad Christensen, and Chris Bright of Ponderosa Hotels. They've got, I think, four or five hotels here in town. Michael Kuvellis, one of the partners, he owns the Haciampa Hotel. Raymond Zogob, a well-known commercial real estate broker, Gary Kelly, civil engineer, and Rick Kelly, geotactical engineer, to name a few. So basically, 100% Prescott team. Our improved Stro architecture team came up with a plan to buy the property for $2.5 million without the $250,000 gift from the taxpayers. We sent a letter to the mayor and council on April 19th describing our approach to the project, desire to master plan the entire South Prescott area, not just this lot, and requested a meeting with the city, but were turned down. The plan would have had the 100-room hotel, restaurant space, retail space, and a $25 million budget that would reverberate around our community. It's not going to go to Sholo, it's not going to go down to Phoenix, it's going to all stay here. We would begin the construction in about a year. At a later meeting, we were told by city manager Katie Gregory that the mayor seemed intent on selecting the third-ranked Sholo team, and he wanted to bring the issue before the council after the election. She was quite puzzled that the mayor would not support our local economy or local team. Our due diligence period ended on May 14th, 2023, about a month after the city terminated Phoenix Rising. So we weren't even given our due diligence period. Now, apparently, the mayor's offer to the Sholo group has increased the due diligence to, I think, 540 days, and has reduced the total price for the land from 2.5 million to 2.2 million, plus the citizens are giving them $250,000. So that's a $550,000 loss to the city of what you could have had. We object to the award of this contract. The contract terms substantially deviate from the RFP requirements and do not represent the best option for the city. The city should give the Stro architecture team the opportunity to match or beat the proposed contract, or should open up the RFP process again and do it right. Thank you.
City manager, do you want to respond to that charge?
I, I really don't. I don't even recall having that conversation. Every conversation I've ever had with Mr. Stro was with Mr. Goodman, and I can assure you, that was not my recollection of what occurred.
Nor was, nor was it mine. Hello, Gillian.
Hello. I'm very nervous. My name is Gillian Haley. I'm the owner of Haley Construction. I live in Prescott, Arizona, and I was born and raised here. Mayor and council, excuse me, Mayor Good and council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I am here regarding approval of contract number 2024.
Gillian, you want to raise that microphone a little bit? We can hear you better.
Probably shouldn't have worn those heels, huh? I am here regarding the approval of contract 2024-129 with Territory Holdings LLC for the sale and redevelopment of Old City Hall. As you know, I am a member of the original team, Stro Architecture, that was unanimously selected by this city council and awarded this project on October 20, October 18th, 2022. Following that award, I personally worked closely with Mayor Good, other members of council at times, the city manager's office, and the city attorney, as well as the other members of our team, as we, as we, excuse me, as we negotiated the agreement for sale of the Old City Hall, contract number 2023-159, that was again unanimously approved by this council at, at the February 28th, 2020, 2023 city council meeting. For months, I have been questioned by various interested parties about my version of those Out of respect for the mayor and council, as well as city staff, I have declined to I am not here out of spite or disrespect. I admire all of you for the service that you give to our community. However, Mayor, respectfully, it was your comments regarding our team that were published this past Saturday in the Daily Courier stating that the city's top choice had, quote, "not been able to perform." That brings me here today. This statement is simply not true. This statement implies that our local architects, engineers, tradesmen, contractors, and generally our local businesses are not capable. This not only denies us all this project, but creates obstacles for our local businesses in pursuing future projects. You do have some background here, so I will start from the point that our team's contract was unanimously approved on the February 28th this, this year. Our team was given only a 75-day due diligence period, a timeframe that, quite frankly, was unreasonable, and we had numerously, on numerous occasions, requested more time in that due diligence period. However, our team moved quickly, working with local civil and geotechnical engineers, utility companies, contractors, consultants, and consultants in gathering critical information and due diligence. As stated, our developer, Mike, Mike Husing of Phoenix Rising, soon after faced a critical family emergency that required his full attention, of which his legal counsel notified the city attorney and was left with the understanding that would be accommodated. Our local team continued to move forward and stayed in almost daily communication with city, city staff as to our progress. Doug Stroh and his design team immediately began design revisions so that our team were able to meet the tight timeframe that council was requiring from our team, starkly different from those listed in the contract that is before you today. By March 7th, only eight days after city approval of our contract, the Stro team had gone before the Water Issues Subcommittee, a public meeting, and received water approval, a clear demonstration of the Stro team's ability to perform. Continuing with progress on the project, Doug Stroh met with Kat Moody, then the head of the Historic Preservation Division, to re, to review revised project design to present to the Historic Preservation Commission. The city manager's office was informed and aware of these meetings in progress, again, a clear demonstration of the, of the Stro's, of the Stro team's ability to perform and our action in doing so. On April 10th, 2023, the city attorney sent an email to our developer, Phoenix Rising, canceling our contract without cause and without even contacting our local team, Stro Architecture. City council essentially fired our developer, and this was done through an informal email with no legal, with no standard legal protocol followed. As I stand here today, the party who was awarded this RFP, Stro Architecture, has still never, never been notified of termination of contract negotiations. Following being made aware of this email, our team members, by our team members, Doug Stro and myself quickly secured a new local development team and submitted, Ponderosa Hotel Management, and submitted a low, a letter addressing our plan of action on April 20th, within nine days of the email that had been sent to Phoenix Rising on the, on the 10th. I later learned that at least some members of council, and I don't know the facts regarding this, and I make no accusations, never received copies of that letter before you all voted in a closed session to start negotiations with another team. In preparing to be here today, I have done an analysis of the two contracts, and I will not go through each of those points, but I do have a copy if you would like it. But there are some critical items I would like to point out. First, as you know, this new contract is a net loss of $550,000 to the taxpayers. As far as the construction date, construction start date, we were on track to begin construction in summer of 2024. The new contract is more than a year, I'm sorry, is not at least, is at least a year beyond that. And another important point, other than our due diligence period, was over 15 months less than what you're allowing, is also an important issue to the entire city, our water allocation approval. We were required to do this in a public process, and we, we received water approval on March 7th, 2023. The new contract with Territory Holding LLC completely waives this, this public process and has pre-approved water approval for their project. This comparison shows vast differences in contract terms and clearly demonstrates city council's demands on the Stro team to be exceedingly more difficult. We continue to rise to each challenge, always working in good faith. I ask that you please consider the narrative that you have released in response to working with our team. We have more than, more than demonstrated our ability to perform. In our project, in our original project estimated, estimation, $50 to $70 million of direct project costs could have been spent here locally with Prescott businesses, a priority, a major priority to our team. And as a side note, our construction projects, projects with my team tend to utilize 85 to 90% local subcontractors. If you approve this contract today with an out-of-town developer, who I also respect, you will be sending an unprecedented amount, an unprecedented amount of commerce out of the Prescott community. In closing, Mayor and council, I ask that you do not approve contract number 2024-129 with Territory, Territory Holdings LLC, that you vote no on this issue, and you move forward to reissue a new request for proposal for the sale and redevelopment of the Old City Hall. Thank you for your time.
First of all, let me say that my comments that were quoted in the newspaper had nothing to do with your ability to perform such construction work. It was simply a reference to the previous awardees' failure to meet the due diligence deadlines that were given to them, and that was the reference, not the ability of our local construction management, et cetera. Joe, do you want to respond to some of the claims here on lack of consideration that they claim?
I, I think the important thing, and maybe Tyler can speak to it as well, or the clarification that I would give, is we were told clearly as city staff in our discussions that one person had the authority to negotiate and one person had the authority to sign, that person being Michael Chung, as I understand the pronouncement. That was the direction we were given, and that's what we're working with. Now, at some point, we were trying to negotiate through a contract and thought, maybe we're reaching a conclusion, and, and, yes, I don't want to, he had a personal family emergency. I don't know what we had to deal with, but it was certainly a long time that we didn't hear from either him or his attorney. We did hear from his attorney, who said, I don't know if, once he's done dealing with family emergencies, if he'll be in a position to enter into a contract. And it was based on that, we approached council and sought direction from council. So it wasn't a three-week extension, it was a long period of non-communication, and then the statement that the future was unclear.
And you, can you address the additional statements made that the Stro group continued to communicate to us? Because a lot of those things are unknown to me.
I, I don't have any personal experience with that. I do know that there was further discussions, but it wasn't with me.
And Mayor, I can speak to that. The, the Stro group did contact me several times through email and phone calls, all of which I kept them apprised of the fact that council, whatever stage it was at, whether they were still circling back and talking in general terms about who to negotiate with, or once the decision was made by council to negotiate with Silo, I relayed that message as well. And also, I, I received further communication asking for updates during that process. It's been six or eight months, I believe, since that decision was made. And so each time, I, I relayed the fact that we're still negotiating with Silo Holdings, now Territory Holdings, but kept them updated as they requested it.
Do you have any comments, city manager? No.
Christopher Blight.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I'm Chris Blight with Ponderosa Hotel Management Services, a 15-year resident here of Prescott. Ponderosa was one of the teams represented that responded to the RFP in 2022. I, I object to the award of this contract based on the terms differing from the RFP details. I believe the council should open it up to rebid the project with the new scope desired. There's been a significant scope change here. I'm just going to highlight a couple of facts that are evidenced with city documents. In the RFP timeline, the city process was lacking in transparency in various respects. In the RFP timeline, the city process was lacking in transparency in various respects. For example, I was personally at the submittal meeting when the purchase price proposal envelopes were opened, and our bid of 200, or $2,550,000, with the highest bid at that time, by $50,000. However, by the time the respondent was selected by the city to purchase, the purchase price by Phoenix Rising or the Stroh group mysteriously increased from $2 million to $2.5 million and nearly matched our bid, which was fascinating to me. Conversely, the bid submitted by Silo Holdings at submittal was $2.5 million, and in the contract presented for vote today, their bid has mysteriously decreased $300,000 to match exactly the appraisal value obtained by the city prior to the bids being revealed. Fascinating. And I'm not even talking about the $250,000 to move the power. At no time were we given a chance to change our bid. It seems only the selected proposals were given the opportunity to retrade, increase, or decrease their bid to match what the city wanted. Why is the current contract on today's agenda priced at exactly the appraised value obtained secretly or privately by the city and not at the price offered by Silo in the RFP process, which was a full $300,000 higher? Also, per meeting minutes from the Mayor's Commission on Facility Optimization and Property Usage, dated July 20th, 2022, which I have a copy here, our hotel-centric multi-use project was ranked second by the committee. However, when selections were made, the council changed the rankings differently than what the committee recommended without any further communication with our team. What additional information would the council have had to make this change since they were not in attendance at the presentation process? Silo and Territory Holdings is capable of building a nice hotel, we've seen that, they do good work. My concerns and objections to making this award have nothing to do with their ability, it has to do with the city's willingness to make changes to bids without allowing others to update their bids, and the city changing their rankings with no perceivable additional knowledge beyond that of the highly qualified FOPU members' recommendations. The council's approach to changing rankings from the committee without a stated cause was a poor approach to this process. Additionally, to allow the proposal the city selected to change their bids and not select the high bidder seems to run afoul of RFP fairness and potentially state statutes. I'm not an attorney, but I can read. The current contract has various other factors meaningfully different than the RFP issued. For these reasons, I object to the award of the contract and suggest the city rebid the project without closed-door adjustments to the proposals. I'll leave a copy of those minutes, and I'm happy to leave a list of the bids that were made when they were opened, and they do not match what was selected by the council.
Bonnie McMinn?
Maybe I'm the only one to come up twice, but I think not. I think it's pretty clear that this project needs to be, a new RFP needs to be done. I was going to be short and sweet and say, given the magnitude of this project, and as the mayor pointed out, it's a highly public and visible project that we need to put our best foot forward, we need to select the entity that follows the RFP. I have been in business for years, decades, and it is not a good feeling to find out that things have changed. And because of that, I think this, like the last project, really needs to have a study session. I think we, we need to understand, I know, we'll, we'll study it, but at least we'll, we'll get to the bottom of things, and if not, start with a clean piece of paper, because this is the type of vote that, Cindy Barks is no longer in her chair, but this is the kind of vote where we read it on Wednesday's paper or Thursday's paper that this award was done, and people don't know about it. And I'm greatly disturbed if, in fact, it's true that there was a vote in a closed meeting to start negotiations with another company. So that is disturbing as well. I'm going to just leave that one sitting on its side. But I think we need a study session, and we definitely need to have a new vote, have a new RFP, because you've got two entities who are local, and it's no offense to Territory Holdings, but it sounds like the scope has changed dramatically, and citizens are not going to be happy when they find out that this vote has occurred, and we don't know what it's going to look like. Everybody had an opinion before with the height and so on, but people are going to want to know, what did you guys vote for? You know, what's it going to look like that we're visual? Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Ralph Hess?
I'm Ralph, Mayor and Council, thank you. I'm Ralph Hess from Prescott. Once again, there's a certain benefit of being towards the end of the comment period because you get to hear what everybody else has said. Initially, I was just going to come up and ask you the justification for using a two-year-old appraisal to determine the sale price. But after I've heard all of the comments, both from Mr. Stroh and Ms. Hadley, Ms. Haley, this is one of the reasons I have repeatedly said that giving the council, or giving the public five days to look at what's going to be an agenda item and then have the council vote on it denies public from having meaningful comments, other than the people who already have the knowledge about what you're considering, denies the public who do not have that knowledge from providing meaningful comments at these voting sessions. You need to have study sessions that give the opportunity for the public to be informed. Candidly, I'll tell you, I have not considered the fact that that's an extra burden on staff to conduct study sessions before you vote on an item, but in the past, that's always been done. There hadn't, there had never, ever been a voting, voting session on an item that had not previously been, been considered at a study session. All of you who have lived here for as long as I've lived here are well aware that that's the way the, the council used to consider items. They'd have a study session, and then subsequently, they'd vote on it. I don't know if you need to do another RFP. From what I've heard, I do have concerns whether, to be in compliance with the law, you do have to do another RFP, but I don't know that. And the reason I don't know that is because I've only had five days to know about what you were considering to doing today. So that's all I have to say.
That's it.
Yeah, go ahead, Shane.
I want to just clarify a couple of points that were made. We weren't third, we were second. We were the two finalists, there were two finalists, it was the other group and us. So, so we weren't third, we didn't like jump someone in line. So in terms of timing, we don't have a desire to extend this needlessly, and we will perform to the quickest of our ability, but we also recognize just the reality of trying to get a historic preservation project done. So to the extent we can speed things along, we will do our best to do so. Someone made the statement, money going out of the community and us not being local. To me, that's a bit offensive at this point. We have showed by almost any measure that we are highly local. I mean, we have invested in the community, and we are here investing again. Yes, it's accurate to say, I live in Cholo, Arizona, it's another small community, but we have been doing business in Prescott now for five generations. And I'm sorry, a bit upset that, that the things that we try to do and do our best at are not considered local, that's a bit frustrating to me. Why is our price different than originally submitted in a RFP? Our RFP response included the police gated land, it included additional land, it also included going six stories tall. As part of this process, we have come to the understanding that that height limitation and the police property is just not going to be part of the project. For that reason, it's a different price for us in terms of our ability to perform and what price we can pay for the land. I also want to say, there were study sessions involved in this, there were RFP study sessions, people were invited into the city to come see what the city wanted and to then submit a response to the RFP. Those RFP packets were opened in public, and so, again, I don't think that there's been any sort of mismanagement of like, well, we jumped ahead and we offered something different. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shumway. Councilmember Rusing?
Oh, excuse me, I have a question for Mr. Shumway. You know, when you have a large commercial project like this, the cold, hard fact is who can get the financing? And I would like to ask Mr. Shumway, do you have the financing lined up, or are you self-financed? How are you planning on doing this?
So there will be both debt and equity financing, we're coming up with the equity for the project, we're ready to go with the equity. Debt financing, it would be part, I think, of almost any project unless you are a multi-billionaire, which we're not. And so we have relationships with debt financiers that have, those relationships are good, and we anticipate them being good here. We've talked with them about this project, and they're excited about it as well.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Joe. Joe, do you have concerns about whether or not the city followed the RFP process correctly and whether there's liability associated with that?
And we've opined on this, and the RFP went out, council voted on it, and we've, the first option didn't go through, we went with the second option at this point, so no.
Thank you.
Do we have any further comments from council? Any additional comments from the public?
No, sir.
So I will entertain a motion on this item. Go ahead, Shalane.
I apologize for my remarks if I offended you. A couple of items that I wanted to note is that I spoke with our developer and his legal team almost every day. We more than had the financing, he was thrilled about this project, and we were moving ahead. We were only notified from an email that he sent us that this had been canceled. I just wanted to clarify some of that, that the ability to perform, at least from our team, had nothing to do with financing, and we were prepared, or our developer, as far as I know, who I spoke with almost every day, as I said, was also prepared to move Thank you for your time. Again, I will ask that you either table this or reconsider issuing a new RFP.
Well, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance number 2023-1848, approving contract number 2024-129 with Territory Holdings LLC for the sale and redevelopment of Old City Hall at 201 South Cortez Street.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Adoption of resolution number 2023-1871, declaring intent to be reimbursed in connection with certain capital expenditures related to acquiring land near Prescott Regional Airport, Ernest A. Love Field.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is on the agenda because council has discussed the potential for land acquisitions around the Prescott Regional Airport, and this item is required in the event that the city does need to issue long-term debt to cover the upfront costs of those purchases. The adoption of this resolution is really just a financial tool that will allow the city to reimburse itself, reimburse itself in the event of federal and state grants that are received related to any acquisitions, and this item needs to be approved prior to the approval of any land acquisitions, which, as you see on your agenda, the very next item is, in fact, one of those land acquisition purchases. And I have Mark Woodfill here, our finance director, can answer any questions you may have about it.
Thank you, Katie. Katie pretty well summed it up. I mean, that's essentially what is required by the IRS, the total amount of the potential debt issue identified in there is $21 million, which is, you'll recall from our workshop on the 24th, was taking into account the highly likely, of course, you will not issue debt, long-term debt for grants that you may receive as reimbursement, you cannot do that. So we won't issue $21 million if that isn't what is spent by council, we will issue up to what is needed for the city's share, not the amount that's the grant. With that, I mean, I'd be glad to answer any other questions, but Katie summed it up pretty well.
Any questions or comments from council? Mayor Protam Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I guess my question is, with regards to the ability to issue debt, what type of debt is contemplated in our ability to issue debt as the land acquisition goes forward?
As we discussed in the workshop of the, of October 24th, I believe, we, we brought forward two possible options, an excise tax, which does not require, require voter approval, that would be repaid by general fund revenues, obviously reducing the amount available for other general fund functions. The other option would be if council wanted to take a GO bond to the voters in the coming November election, November a year from now, which would be repaid by property tax revenues.
Okay, that's my question, thanks.
And for those who are not familiar with that, a GO bond is a general obligation bond of the city. Do you want to describe exactly what a general obligation bond would be and how it would impact city finances?
A general obligation bond is, of course, approved by the voters, as I mentioned. The revenues to make the debt service payments are assessed against all the properties within the city limits and part of everybody's property tax bill each year.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns? I know this particular parcel is the Chino Valley Irrigation District parcel.
Actually, Mayor, it's not, that will come the next, but this is just a reimbursement resolution.
Oh, this is a reimbursement requirement, okay.
So each one will have to be voted on individually, this doesn't approve any payments, but allows for future payments should council decide to be reimbursed.
Okay, this is simply to approve the opportunity for reimbursement. Okay, understood. Councilmember Rusing?
I'd like to make a motion to move to adopt resolution number 2023-1871.
Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. Motion and second, please vote. All right, we'll move on to item 10E.
Adoption of ordinance number 2023-1847, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, county of Yavapai, state of Arizona, approving a purchase and sale agreement, city contract number 2024-128, between the city of Prescott and Chino Valley Irrigation District for approximately 61.43 acres of real property near the Prescott Regional Airport, Ernest A. Love Field.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is for the purchase and sale agreement for approximately 61 acres of land located on the north and towards the west end of the airport. I think it was up here, if you could put it back up here. If you could put it back up here on the screen. But the property is currently owned by the Chino Valley Irrigation District. The purpose of purchasing this property is to support the long-term plans for the regional airport runway extension in support of our commercial service and other airport operations. The purchase of this land has a number of benefits. First, the city can use the land, specifically the dirt on the land, as a grant match towards the expansion costs. It provides further protections for the airport, and it has the longer-term potential to provide opportunities for future economic development growth. Our real property administrator, Brian Sparks, is here to provide some additional information and answer any questions regarding the purchase and sale agreement or the parcel.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Mr. Sparks. Please proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Mayor Protam, council members. Brian Sparks, real estate administrator. Yes, as Katie alluded to, we're looking at getting this approved for 61.43 acres. If you look -- and I apologize, I didn't have Tyler's time to put a better map together. This was something I whipped up this morning. But the shaded area, you can see where the 61 acres is. As Katie mentioned, this property has an added benefit. Staff has estimated there's approximately 1.2 million yards of topsoil that we can pull off of this 61 acres, which will help to fill the end of the runway where we're going to need that dirt. And the cost for that would bring that down to about 70 cents a yard at the purchase price that we're paying for this land. And Katie could probably speak better to what the offsets would be from FAA, but I'm sure they would be pretty significant. This contract was negotiated between Joseph's office. I had some input in it. We've also worked very closely with Chino Valley Irrigation District's attorneys and hammered out this deal. We will have a full policy of title on this when we're done. So, any questions?
Just as a -- I don't know if you mentioned this, but the price of the land is 850,000 is the price with plus closing costs, which gets it to approximately 890,000.
853,750, to be exact.
853, he knows. He's the real property administrator. Listen to him.
Councilmember Roussing?
First of all, I'd like to thank the Chino Valley Irrigation District for allowing this deal to come to fruition and supporting our airport and our economic growth. So, if there's no more comment, I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on a second. Brian, if we did not have this property to utilize for fill, and we had to go out and acquire fill, how much would that cost?
Probably close to $1 million.
So, in essence, we're being able to acquire this land in lieu of having to pay nearly that or more just to acquire enough fill to be able to proceed with a airport runway extension.
That is correct, Mayor. And the other added benefit is, once we're done leveling out that 61 acres, we will have 61 acres congruent with our airport with fee simple title, so.
Right, and that would allow us to utilize that property more effectively than we would otherwise, having a big hill on it.
Correct. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Please proceed there, Councilmember Roussing.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2023-1847, approving city contract number 2024-128 with Chino Valley Irrigation District for the purchase of real property near Prescott Regional Airport, Ernest A. Love Field.
Second.
All right, the motion is second. Any further comment? Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, we'll move on to item 10F.
I'll go ahead with this one. This is actually -- this item is for the approval of a revised preliminary plat located in South Ranch, Unit 2 of the Deepwell Ranch Master Plan. It was approved by Planning and Zoning with stipulations in which planning manager George Worley is here to discuss in further details.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor and council, this is a request to revise a preliminary plat that's been approved by Planning Commission a couple of years ago and council last year. The particular section is Unit 2, and I've identified all of Unit 2 on the map just to give you perspective where it is in relation to the airport and to the major roadways that are planned for the area. So, the curved roadway is Jenna Lane. You'll see that again as we step through this. The area is the triangular portion of property that is the east side of Jenna Lane in this map, and that is the original preliminary plat that just shows the lot layouts and street layouts. You'll notice, as I go through the next step, the street layout is substantially the same. There are differences. But the lot layout for Unit A, which is the southernmost portion, the tip of the triangle, they're requesting to reduce some of the lots by 10 feet from a 45-foot lot width to a 35-foot lot width. This nets an additional 12 lots for the overall subdivision section, this unit 2, and allows for a smaller footprint house for the lots. That's something the developer says there's a market for, and they're pursuing, trying to build somewhat more affordable houses because they're smaller footprints. So, there's a slight reduction in the cost of construction. One of the questions that came up during Planning Commission related to, because of the narrower lots and having narrower street frontages in front of each lot, having some additional parking within the unit. This would allow for overflow parking, guest parking, that type of thing. The developer took that comment into consideration and has identified 12 to 14, depending upon how much of the open space areas they use, 12 to 14 additional parking spaces that are off-site as guest parking spaces. It's a little unusual for residential subdivisions here in Prescott. Generally, we don't have single-family subdivisions with off-site parking like this, but because of the narrow lot size, they've chosen to pursue that. Of interest, of course, is proximity to the airport. You'll notice that the area highlighted in red is all of Unit 2. Unit 2A is fully within Zone 6, Impact Zone 6, which allows residential development, both under current regulations and would allow residential development under the proposed AVO, should that be moved forward at some point in the future. So, this is not impacted by one of the adverse impact zones of Zone 4 or Zone 2, which are significant overflight areas. They are within the 60 DNL, which, again, under the proposed AVL, would allow residential uses. They will experience a lot of aircraft overflights, and it is something that was discussed at the Planning Commission. The airport director had some input into it at the time, and with some stipulations that were made at that time, identified in your staff report with the recommended motion. This was approved by Planning and Zoning Commission by a vote of 6-0. There are a couple of options, we believe, for a motion. You can move to approve it per the staff report, or if you want to add additional stipulations, there are additional stipulations that can be discussed by council. We do have the applicant's representatives here who can talk about buyer notifications, which was a considerable discussion at the Planning Commission and has been on other projects here. They have a proposed list of ways that they can identify that, and we do have a separate presentation that we can run for you if you desire to go to that direction. With that, I will take any questions you may have. And again, we have the applicants here to talk about the remainder of the topic.
Councilmember Roussing?
Thank you. So, this is in the 60 DNL.
Yes.
And the applicant wants to put even more people. He's not happy with what he got, wants to put even more residents in the 60 DNL so we will get even more complaints about airport noise, right?
That's a possibility. So, this is 12 additional lots.
How will the narrowing of these lots affect the ability of the residents to be able to park their cars in their driveways and garages?
The lot design, the narrower 35-foot lot, is not atypical in Prescott. We have a number of subdivisions with these narrow lots. Generally speaking, to meet city code requirements, both the Land Development Code and those adopted by the Deepwell Master Plan, a minimum of 20 feet of driveway length is required from the garage face to the back of the curb or back of sidewalk to allow a car to park in the driveway as well as cars to park in the garage. The idea of that is to provide some additional off-site parking, or, excuse me, onsite parking for guests of a resident family. That requirement is in place for this. The lots will have to have a minimum 20-foot-length driveway. They cannot overhang the curb or overhang a sidewalk. These subdivisions generally don't have sidewalks. So, they will have a 20-foot depth.
So, this one has a sidewalk on either side of the street?
I don't believe either side of the street is proposed in this subdivision.
So, there'll be no park -- no street parking at all?
Street parking would be legal as long as they meet all street parking requirements. So, the width of the roadways are standard city streets.
So, generally, they, at least in the Westwood development, they have parking only on one side of the street?
That may be the case here as well. That's a determination that's made by our public safety folks when they look at the roadway as well as our streets to park.
Will we see that on the final plat?
We can make sure it's noted on the final plat.
I notice also in the -- some of the parts of Westwood, some of these very long pickup trucks, the beds are extending in -- almost into the street because the driveway is so short.
If the truck is longer than the 20-foot requirement, that's a possibility. However, if they're parking and extending over into the street, they potentially could receive a citation for illegal parking.
Well, I think that's a legitimate concern that I have. I know this one rectangular section is not going to have any development in there. Is that some type of a retaining pond or a stormwater runoff area or something?
It's to the southeast side. There's a long stretch. It is an open space tract. It will contain some stormwater facilities, but it is an open space tract. It was specifically put in place -- let's see if I can get to this one. Sorry, I'm going the wrong direction. It's after that one, that one.
Be a slide.
Yeah. So, because those pieces actually are within the Zone 4, they left them as a feature, either an open space area, or in most cases, all of these are going to contain some mix of open space and drainage facilities. So, detention base and an open space area combined.
So, will there be agricultural or landscape planting in that area? Exactly how is it going to be used?
Because it's going to be used for a combination of open space and for drainage, the likelihood of plantings in that area are pretty low because of water inundation. There will be landscaping features at the entrances to the subdivision, so this unit would have a landscaped area at the beginning of the entrance.
So, as long as we don't have any trees put in there? Because that could have a potential impact on takeoff and height for the commercial aircraft?
The developers have, at the Planning Commission, agreed to limit the maximum height of vegetative growth in the subdivision to the maximum height of the buildings in the subdivision so that the growth will not exceed the height of the structures. If I recall correctly, they are willing to make that a plat note for the final plat.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor. George, I was just had a question about the length of the driveway that got discussed a moment ago. It occurs to me that trucks are getting longer and bigger as time has gone on. And so, I wonder, and I Googled while I was up here because I was curious, like, what is the average length of a new pickup truck these days? What I came up with was, and I can't attest to the veracity of Google, but it said 19.8 feet, which makes me wonder if it's not worthy of looking at that. Obviously, not now as we go through this process today, but just I wonder if staff might inquire to see if that's the case and if there might be some consideration to make sure that we're not -- again, my fear is always that we're turning normal people into criminals unnecessarily, so.
Understood.
Just a bit of feedback.
Understood. I think that feedback can also be applied to the design for the individual lots. When the developer brings us something, we can make sure that, in fact, they exceed the 20-foot requirement.
Councilwoman Kentelme?
Thank you, Mayor. George, I was at Planning and Zoning when this project came through, and I know Ashley, and I can't remember your last name, was there. And I had spoken about this issue, but there were a few other issues, too. This has got a lot of documentation of problems because, as I said before, the problem with the length of the trucks is the confliction with the CCNRs. They conflict. In the CCNRs, it says you cannot park on the street or you get a fine after 10 o'clock. So, how are they going to deal with that? And was it, if you go back to, was it 12 extra?
It's 12 extra.
12 extra parking lots out of?
Yes.
Out of all of those units? 108 lots? That's not a lot of extra parking.
The 108 is the entirety of Unit 2.
Right.
So, within this section, it's roughly 50 lots?
How many, 50?
Roughly 50.
50 lots. So, they're going to have 12 extra, hoping that there's only 12 people with extra-long trucks. Because I -- we struggle with this. I have properties in an HOA. We struggle with this issue over and over and over again. The people come in, they don't want to pay the fines, they have nowhere to put their trucks. If you add the hitch on many of these trucks, they fall out into the sidewalks all the time. So, you know, I'm just going to suggest, look at those CCNRs, find out if that clause is in, if it's a template of a CCNR, that will be in there where they cannot park in the street. They park in the street to prevent themselves from hanging over into the curbing, in this case, since there'll be no sidewalks. It's a constant problem. It's well documented. I want to bring that up. The other thing is, some agreements were made in Planning and Zoning, and you mentioned stipulations. Are those currently on or going to be on your Central Square program where everybody will be able to get those?
Correct. One of the benefits of having a central program like Central Square is that when something gets recorded and when something gets approved by council, it gets recorded in that software program. It's available to every department in the city. Anyone from any department looking at a set of plans that are submitted would be able to see any of the stipulations and all of the plans that were associated with the original approval. So, we have a much better system now for coordination between all departments and plan review, for instance, when we get to individual building permitting stage.
Is that up and going now with?
We've actually been using it for years. We've just got more functionality recently with a move to the cloud. I'm old, I don't know what that means, but it's better.
One of the other big things that came up was the disclosures to the purchaser. Many people that I spoke with and have, you know, I've met in many of those meetings that were taking place out at the airport a while back. One of the things that was a current problem was people receiving those easements, navigation easements, at the time that they sign a title, becoming aware of those and not being able to get their deposits back. I think there were some agreements made that they would add an additional three days on to those. Did that get in, written in any kind of a document as an agreement? Because I think that's very important. Again, many, many people said they never received those. I told them, go back and look in all of your paperwork from your purchase. They found them. Some people later, some were only found them at the signing and were not able to change their mind and get their deposits back. That was a reoccurring theme out there. And I believe there were some agreements made. I just want to make sure, was it three to five days that they could actually get their deposits back when they were made aware of the 800-plus operations at the airport every day?
Yeah, and so, what they agreed to, and they sent us an agreement in writing, but there is a five-day waiting period or an attorney review period after the document is countersigned by the builder. So, the home buyer will sign the document. So the home buyer will sign the document, and have to certify that they reviewed this information. Then it'll be countersigned by the builder, and then there's a five-day attorney review period to get out of the deal at no penalty.
So that's been recorded, though? That will be, okay. And then one other thing, I met with, I think her name was Ms. Henderson, and a group out there, and they actually showed me those disclosures, and there was a blank in the area where they were supposed to disclose how many operations take place at that airport, and it was in the two packets, closing title packets that they both had that was blank. And I think that that came up also, and they were asked to make sure that they insert that number in that blank spot going forward with any sale because it can't remain blank. I think part of the reason that these people feel they've been cited is they were not aware at the time of citing, signing that this was, you know, close to 900 operations, 800 and whatever it is. I forget now. I wrote it down, but it's a lot, and I think they have a right to know that. So I think that that blank has got to get filled in the next time these packets go out to these people that are purchasing these properties.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. George, did I hear you say there weren't going to be any sidewalks in this project?
I don't believe there are sidewalks in this.
But don't we have a city code that requires sidewalks on one side at least?
Not within the Deepwell Master Plan. The Master Plan.
That's right. It supersedes our codes.
Right. Some parts of our code.
Representative here from Ashdorn can respond to that?
Thank you.
Think it's Evermore now?
Correct. Mayor Protem, Councilmembers Lindsey Schube with the law firm of Gammage and Burnham, but fabulous memory because Ashley is my pregnant law partner, who I believe she and her, well, not pregnant, not pregnant, I believe she and her five, oh, can you hear me? I believe she and her five-week-old are watching tonight. So good memory on Ashley. That's my law partner. I am Lindsey. Yeah. Hello, Ashley. So thank you so much. There's a lot of questions that have been answered or asked. Let me start with, we do have a sidewalk on one side, and we do allow parking overnight. We just don't allow parking on the opposite side of the street. So we do have a sidewalk on one side, plus parking is allowed on one side.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And what about having adequate length of a driveway?
Mayor Protem, we have found that this product type, it is more prevalent across the valley because of our affordability issues. I don't think anyone can look at, you know, and I'm getting old, I even have a 16-year-old. You know, the fear of them being able to buy a home and get into fee simple ownership is an incredible challenge everywhere. This product type is more common, not only here in Prescott, but in other jurisdictions, and we haven't had a problem. The code requires 20 feet, and that's what we're going to put. In addition, the code does not require these additional visitor spots, and we have added those to ensure that we won't have a problem. We will work with all of the residents. Also, as stated, in terms of the disclosures, again, there are four different mechanisms of disclosure, and again, before, we do have a five-day period where they can get out of the contract. So Councilmember, I appreciate, and that's a very important, but there are four different mechanisms in which we notice the overflight, and do have the phone number for the airport in there, and encourage everyone to call the airport to hear about the growth plans as well as the existing plans.
So you're trying to tell me that if you added two feet to the driveway, it would no longer be affordable?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, if you can give me one second. I don't know if we can fit an additional two feet. I can ask, but the 20 feet is in the code. In addition to that, we do have on-street parking on one side of the street. In addition to that, we have 12 spots that are not required by code that we've put in here. And these additional, again, as a reminder, this plat, preliminary plat has been approved. The addition of these 12 lots was in response to the town for a community need for some, for a diversity of housing options. Again, a diversity of housing options is something that's required all over the state. So again, the American dream is homeownership, and, you know, it's terrifying how few people are able to get into that today. So that our response of these 12 lots is into, to the community and to Prescott.
So these long trucks can take their rear bumper and put it in these extra parking spots?
Mayor Protem, Councilmembers, we can't add an additional two feet on there. Again, though, we do allow parking on one side of the street and have other options.
How wide is the parking? Is it garage?
It's eight feet to 16 feet. Hi, I'm John Stone with Evermore Door &amp; Homes, and kind of address where the concept of this is, we're trying to get the housing price in, you know, the 300 to 325 range, and so part of that is just a collection of value engineering of, you know, how do we, how do we cut pricing down to get young couples and families to be able to afford? And so, you know, it's not just two feet of a driveway. It's a combination of different value engineering on how do we get young couples and young families to be able to afford, and that's a common question we receive from every municipality. And so we're reevaluating, looking at smaller footprints, looking, you know, how can we get families in? And so to add two feet to a driveway is just, you know, going the wrong direction. So we really want to make affordable housing there and serve the community that allows young couples to be able to afford housing. And so it's, it's just a multiple things of, you know, trying to be creative to please both sides of it so we can have bigger trucks, and I'm one of them. I have one of those big trucks with the hitch on it, and you have to be careful in pulling up to your garage door that you don't hit your garage door and you're still not hanging out on the sidewalk. And so it's a valid concern. I agree with the concern on that. It's just trying to solve both ends of the equation is what it is. So, but at this time, to try and keep in the, in the price range to make it affordable for people, that extra $5,000 to add a couple feet on a driveway, that might mean there's some people that don't qualify, some young couples. And so, and I have kids in that price range, and they just, if you go too much higher with the increased interest rates, it just makes it unattainable for some of those young couples.
Councilmember Rusing.
I'm sorry, I forgot to turn it off. Thank you. It's been a long day.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, with all due respect for the process, at some point, we've got to stop trying to make everything perfect for people. They have to take responsibility, personal responsibility for their home choice. You know, we've got to stop just trying to save people from themselves. I don't know what else to say. I mean, it's crazy if they want the price, and I'm sure that they can't not understand that they're near an airport. They have to, like I said, take personal responsibility and make that choice. This country is built on choice.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Okay, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, but I was in this industry for 40 years. I have served on HOA boards for 40 years. It is a continual problem. Remove it from the CCNRs. That's how you do it, because the fines rack up, we end up having to go after these young homeowners. They can't afford, you know, $10,000 by the end of the day. We attach a lien onto their home, we cause them all kinds of problems because we have to turn a square corner on that. So go back and look at your CCNRs and remove that so you don't have, end up having the same problems. Part of the reason people move into HOAs is they don't want trucks parked all the way down the street with trailers and, you know, all the other things. But that is something that you either add on the two feet or you take it out of the CCNRs, because it causes a lot of problem for these young people you're talking about. And I know because I'm on the receiving end of that by being on the HOAs, and then you have the situation of, if we don't understand what garages are actually used for today, it's storage, not cars. So we have to be realistic, but the ultimate is the problem for these young people that rack up these fines. So it's something that has to be looked at, and I know you know about this. It's, these compact subdivisions are popping up everywhere. This is a common thread. I've always said the engineers, the designers have got to get together with this CCNR problem and deal with that. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or concerns? Any public comment?
No.
So we can either approve it as written or approve it with stipulations. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve PLN 23-002, subject to compliance with all staff comments prior to submittal of the final plat.
All right. I have a motion in second. Please vote.
Councilwoman Tenny and Councilwoman Cantelme, I need you to vote please if you can. If you can just tell me verbally, that's fine. I think the system is as exhausted as we all are.
It can't be that bad, can it? I voted yes.
Thank you. And Connie, I just saw yours. Do you? Passes 5-1.
That concludes our agenda for today's voting meeting, and I will close with a comment from probably the, my favorite president during the course of my lifetime, Ronald Reagan, who said, "A leader once convinced that a particular course of action is the right one must have the determination to stick with it and be undaunted when the going gets rough." This meeting is adjourned.